All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the city council meeting and call the meeting to order. I'll ask you to all please stand by Capitol allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Molly, if you could help us with the roll call, please.
Other person, Henry?
Here.
Other person, Schaefer?
Here.
Other person, Valdi?
Here.
Other person, Dean?
Here.
Other person, Germer?
Here.
Other person, Price?
Here.
Other person, Iker?
Here.
Administrator Hafner?
Here.
Mayor Atwell?
Present. Great, thank you very much. All right, we have a special order of business tonight for a swearing in of new City of Delafield police officer Samantha Ritter. Want to come up Samantha?
Try to get the, in the backdrop for the pictures.
Aye Samantha Ritter.
Aye Samantha Ritter.
Let's get this on the recording. Aye Samantha Ritter.
Aye Samantha Ritter.
Having been appointed as a police officer for the city of Delafield.
Having been appointed as a police officer for the city of Delafield.
Hereby swear that I will support the constitution of the United States.
Hereby support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
Thank you. And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Wonderful, congratulations.
Welcome aboard Samantha. All right, we will move on to number five, approval of minutes of November 7, 2022, common council meeting.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Okay, City of Delafield citizens' comments. Any citizen of Delafield like to come up for citizens' comments?
You have to look up there, people with their hands up.
Come on, first person up, right there. Jackie up. We have a pretty full room, so really try to keep your comments to three minutes, please. I'll remind you when you get there.
Is this on?
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jackie Leiden, 1614 West Shore Drive, Delafield, Wisconsin. Hello, I'm not going to speak very long this evening. I didn't really prepare a remark. This is kind of part two of something that started a couple of weeks ago here. I wanted to speak in opposition to the proposed municipal pier, whatever the term of art describing it is right now. We were talking about environmental impacts and budgetary impacts, and I was very struck by my neighbor Jim Zahorek two weeks ago who talked about city budget as regards EMT services. My family uses the EMT fairly regularly because we have a 92-year-old at home. As the years have gone by, you know, Delafield's a wonderful place to age in, but aging in place, aging at home, it kind of is a community effort, and I think it's a community benefit. I love being in a multi-generational household. But when someone falls, if you can't get them up yourself, and neither my sister, you know, we're pretty strong, and our mother isn't that big, but you call for help. And the people we call are EMT techs. And this is the, so generally, in our case, my mother's just slid. But while she's down on the floor, you know, you're just wondering how long it's going to be, if anything's going to happen, you know, how much worse it's going to get, and then in come the EMTs. Well, and they'll say, you know, call us anytime, we'll just put you back in your chair, put you back in your bed, wherever, we got a bill. And the bill was for $200. And it says that you were treated but not transported. Please complete the enclosed form with your insurance information, and note that Medicare and Medicaid do not cover this service. If your insurance does not cover this service, you may be responsible for payment. So it's really going to make me think, well, what do we do the next time? Should I call? Should I, you know, when I called about this, they didn't really say too much about why this was, but I think it really talks about the kind of priorities that we should be thinking about as a kind of community. If you're straining your services, your health services, so that you can do these other things which seem gratuitously unnecessary, if not harmful, then I just think that raises a lot of questions. And Jim said he had that same concern about when his father was alive, and I, you know, I just think it's something, one of the many reasons that this should be halted. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the comments. Who'd like to be next? Come on up.
Name and address. Mike Housman, 3135 Sylvester Drive. Tonight, all of you will be struggling with an additional investment for dredging. The Lake Welfare Committee recognizes it's a lot of money, but the scope of the project has not changed, nor has the need for the project. So it's unfortunate, we ran into significantly higher costs when the contractors responded to the bids, but like I said, the requirements have not changed. I certainly appreciate your consideration on this matter, and I most definitely appreciate all of the work of each and every one of you for the city of Delafield. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you for the comments. Who'd like to be next? Come on up, sir, way in the back. He's the first hand up. First hand up is the one I call.
Kevin Markley, 3219 Sylvester Drive, and I just want to express my support to have the dredging done at the mouth of the Bark River.
Can you please call your last name?
Markley, M-A-R-K-L-E-Y.
Thank you.
And please speak into the mic, too.
I would like to support the dredging of the mouth of the Bark River. It's gotten to be, well, I think it's detrimental to the whole lake. The lake is part of the community here, and I think we, it's really necessary because it's going to plug up the lake. Obviously, the Bark River feeds the lake, and we are getting close to having the whole mouth of the Bark River plugged up. I'm near the mouth, and I can't even get my boat in and out anymore. So it's a bad situation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mary, I saw you first.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Daniel. I live here in Delafield at 309 Wisconsin Avenue. This evening, I'd like to speak to item number 11, discussion possible action on the proposed 2023 budget. The capital improvement plan continues to add what I consider more pet projects each year, and the cost of maintaining them is never planned for in the operations budget. Three years of suggesting the cost per lineal foot for maintenance of a new path, it now appears as a line item. Since 2020, I've asked at a final budget approval meeting to consider pausing items presented in the capital improvements plan for things we would really like to have. Everything we approve for the capital improvements plan should have a cost impact analysis attached and then transferred to the operations budget. Examples to consider for this year, the public boat dock, this project had $30,000 in last year's column, and this year it's got $29,500. I'm a little confused. The total of $60,000 last year was achieved by $30,000 committed from the city, and then it had a line that said a grant from the DNR for the other $30,000. The DNR need, you need to have a permit to have this dock, so we don't have a permit yet, to the best of my knowledge. So we've been, I see us playing with numbers a little bit to get to where you want, but let's use some common sense. Let's wait until we have the permit, please, and not allocate money to something that may or may not happen. The Genesee Street path, Oakwood Drive to Carriage Hills, has $3,990 yearly maintenance cost plus the $180,000 to build it. East Devonshire Road Connector Path, which is Murr Valley Road to the Lake Country Trail, $1,200 yearly maintenance plus the $40,000 to build it. The Oakwood Park Pickleball Court, asking for $80,000 to build it, but there's no plan presented as to how this will function, and no input as to how it will be managed. So I think that goes under operating budgets. The city welcome signs, there's three of them asked for, a cost of $4,600. It says installation is the only cost, the only maintenance operating cost. The design chosen and the placement have ongoing costs. When the population numbers change, that little sign at the bottom has to be completely replaced. And the last time I asked, I think it was about $250 apiece. So the design is also so low, it requires extra time to mow underneath it. You can't do it with a big swing mower. The requested placement of the signs has had extra maintenance because the state of Wisconsin requires more input for placement materials and getting permission for it. So my feeling is, we have more welcome signs than most communities have. I attended the Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board Special Meeting Thursday, November 17th. What resources these people are. Many of them are retired chiefs who started out as volunteers in their communities, who know what this is all about, and the numbers that are involved. You can play with numbers all you want, but it's all about protecting us in today's real-life situations, the same as our police department does. The new development taxes will not be of significant value for at least three years. Pause and wait for the scales to tip in our favor. Citizens are concerned, and rightfully so. Delafield has a level of services that is so commendable, but it has to be paid for and maintained. So I ask you to please use the gifts you were given to protect us and our tax dollars wisely. Thank you, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you. Thanks for the comments.
Thank you, Mary.
Right there.
Hello, everybody. Dennis Zopczek, 3141 Sylvester Drive. Want to echo Mike Housman's and Kevin Markley's comments on the dredging. It has become a safety issue. The neighbors in that area pull the boats out when they get stuck. It's getting dangerous to do that, so the police are going to have to be called, and they're already short. So that is really one of the major issues. So please approve the extra funds.
Thank you for the comments. Right there in the back.
Evening. My name is Steve, last name is spelled Z-A-J-C, pronounced Zeitz, because I know no one's going to spell that right. But you just stole my thunder from the safety standpoint. I live at 30309 Lake Drive. I can give three different instances where people either ran aground, or I waved them off this year. Late this summer, there was a boat just cruising along in the evening, and they were headed right into the hazard area. Despite six buoys being there, people still will drive right into that area, and practically waving them, probably 20 feet short, they stopped and turned off. Otherwise, they would have plowed right into it. On the night of the fireworks this year, our neighbor's boat broke down, and they got towed back to their dock by someone who lives over in Zastro. They came in from the north, let their boat coast in, continued south, and did go right into that hazard area, and got stuck, and after some furious engine reversing, got out of there. But the concern I would have is that at some point, someone's going to get stuck there, you know, after dark, when there's no police boat on the water, or, you know, in the middle of the night, because it just happens with such frequency. And I think we're going to have a major problem from a safety standpoint when someone runs aground in there, and they can't get out. So I fully support the additional funds for the dredging. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. You're next.
Hi, my name is Sue Smith. I live at 3207 Sylvester Drive. I'm also supporting the dredging. It's gotten so bad, we have to help people get out. Many times, we've had to go out and tow them, or push them, or help them get out. Also, if it gets put off this year, it's only going to be more expensive next year and the year after that, and then we're going to need more money. So it would really pay to do it this year and get it done so we'd get some flow from the Bark River into the, into the lake. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Back there in the orange hat? Partial orange.
Gary Jalasic.
Please into the mic.
Jerry Jalasic, 3231 Sylvester Drive. I support the dredging.
Can you please call your last name, sir?
J-E-L-A-C-I-C. I'm here to support the dredging.
Say your address one more time.
3231 Sylvester Drive. Okay?
Yep.
All right. I'm here to support the dredging. I've probably been the longest homeowner on that side of the lake for years. And they dredged it about 10, 12 years ago, and it started filling back in about five years ago, and started to affect maybe about 10 houses. But over the course of time, now it's probably affecting anywhere from 30 to 40 houses and getting worse. Plus, it's collecting in a little pond in the front. I've seen the weed cutter get stuck out there and have a hard time getting out. And pretty soon, we'd have to name the island. It's going to be a silt island right in that corner up by the end of the mouth of the river. So the problem isn't getting any better, and it's spreading quick and affecting more houses. Please try to help us on that side of the lake. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Anybody else on this side? Okay, right there.
Hello, my name is Renee Smith. I'm at 3227 Sylvester. I just want to, again, ask you all to support our dredging at that corner of the lake. We're getting pretty desperate. I mean, it's become a thing where everybody watches each other coming and out because you know people are going to get stuck, and we're at like two inches of water trying to get our, the boat lifts don't even go down. You're just kind of sitting there, and it's really become dangerous. And so we would appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Anybody else? Sir?
Good evening. Phil Casson, 1208 Genesee Street. Good evening, thank you very much. Tonight, you've been asked to consider adding almost another $15,000 to the city's capital expense, expenses in order to make a public transient pier possible. I believe there's several reasons why you should pull this item from the budget and not construct the pier. First, while you were asked, while you were asked, are being asked to add funds over and above last year's allocation, that's because of cost increase and other costs not included in the original allocations. One of the costs not included, my understanding, is that the installation of the actual project itself was not included. It seems that if something that essential, the installation, was not included, that there could be other items overlooked as well. More than likely, there are other expenses, perhaps signage for the pier, or signage for the police boathouse property, which I know the police want to make sure they keep people away. Could also be access to and from the pier on the gravel road, or even lighting. As you know, the United States Congress is on the edge of passing, or has come close to the edge of passing, the daylight savings, and depending upon how they end this practice, either inside or outside of daylight savings, that means the sun must be setting on June 22nd, longest day of the year, 21st, at 8:00 PM. Problem is, the park is still open till 9:00, and in fact, I believe that pier would even be open, it was proposed for an hour or two past park limits, so there needs to be some coordination with the park commission as well. Nonetheless, if the park is open that late, lighting will become an ongoing factor. Ballooning costs are one factor that you should consider with this. A second reason you should also not consider this item is because it's in a sensitive area. I know that state and city documents have already shown that this area is an ecosystem that's critically important to the health of the lake. I know that this proposal has been compared to the construction of tennis courts, and that there is nothing more incorrect than to make that false analogy. In comparison, we don't build tennis courts where there's a fragile ecosystem. Likewise, tennis courts could be used by all of the citizens in the city. This pier, generally speaking, would not unless you can buy a boat or have access to by the annual permit. Additionally, if this pier is built and does get the use that people think it will get, that would be far more use than a tennis court would get, and that would be impacting the neighbors in an unequal way, not compared to any tennis court. A final reason you should say no to this budget item is because you're spending time on a project that the DNR has or might make unfeasible anyways. In my conversation with the DNR, I've been told personally that while they cannot, they cannot, cannot personally outright deny the project, they certainly can and do expect to approve something smaller than a six-slip pier. Eventually, they may allow for two, possibly three slips in this sensitive area, and after you allocate one or two of those slips for St. John's and another party with access rights, you're left with one, possibly two slips. At that point, I would ask, is that a practical expense or an amenity? No matter what, if you do approve this portion of the budget tonight, I would ask that you at least finish the permitting process, the permitting process and the application as quickly as possible to even see if this is a project that's worth spending any more time on. One more, two more quick comments regarding the dredging. The dredging, yes, is an important thing to take care of the lake, but I will say, also be prepared in the future, it's going to fill in again. Additional funds need to be considered about what's coming from upstream. That is what we've got from Sewer PAC two years ago in that final report. Need to work on what's upstream, or it will just keep happening. Likewise, I'd also like to piggyback on Mary Daniel's comments regarding building things we can't pay for. These are very nice things to have, whether it be pickleball courts, additional paths, new basketball courts, piers, but it all comes at an expense. And I don't know how aware people are of the pending budgetary constraints that we're going to be facing with the fire department. That is going to be huge. We need to make sure that we're not spending money on things we don't have to. I will just close with those remarks. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you for the comments. Who'd like to be next? Who would like to be next? Come on up.
Good evening. Jim Nelson, 604 St. John's Drive. I've written a letter to each of the council members, and so I'm just going to briefly summarize some points, because I stand against the installation of the pier here at the end of St. John's Bay. I've lived adjacent to the park and the bay for 30-some years, and I believe it'll have a negative impact, not only on the lake, but also on the park and on my lifestyle. So I appreciate that there'll be additional traffic problems, congestion, parking and lighting, they're not even considered. You'll have to have space for toiletries, garbage, noise, security. All of these things should be brought forth before any money, additional money is allocated for this project. Anyhow, I have submitted papers, and I've given them to all of you. I'll give it to the city clerk now. Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you for the comments. Who else? Anybody else? Go on once, come on up.
Good evening. John Connell, 808 Back Bay Road.
C-O-N-N-E-L-L.
I just want to kind of echo and reaffirm the comments made by the two previous speakers regarding the pier. I guess, I'm a little confused about this issue of having only lived here for four or five years, but it's my understanding, this is a perpetual thing that comes up every year. And I kind of just don't really get it. We know we don't have a DNR permit or approval for this, and we're already strapped for funds, and now we're going to think about building something that benefits so few people. Secondly, living on the bay, I get to see the boat traffic every day. The bay is too shallow to have a pier back there without causing environmental damage to the bay. That bay is a nursery for the lake. Some people will tell me that stirring up all the silt is good for the bay. Well, I would counter that, stirring up all the silt. for the bay. Well, I would counter that. Stirring up all the silt only covers up all the fish eggs and other things that are important to the bay for marine life. Third, who's going to look over this? People that park boats in slips and go somewhere, they go into town, they're going to come back and sit in their boat at night. How is that going to be handled? Fourth, last year, I brought up the... How's the insurance work? I asked several times. Never got an answer to that. I don't think this is a well-advised proposal. I just want to go on record saying I think it should be pulled and rethought, and we'll see if it comes back up again next year. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Anyone else? Go on once. Go into it. Come on up.
Susie Thompson, and that's S U S I E, 700 Milwaukee Street. Several things. First of all, Lake Country Fire and Rescue are so important to our city, and I'm glad that it looks like everybody else is finally under the same agenda of supporting that we need to have police and firemen when we call 911. Talking about the dredging, it's very important to Della Field and to Nagawicca. It's not supposed to be a marsh, and if we don't do dredging, we're going to end up with a big marsh called Nagawicca instead of a lake. If you look at other lakes, Pewaki, Okachi, especially Okachi, it's an ongoing thing. It's done regularly. It's budgeted for. Homeowners on many lakes do pay extra for dredging, but it's not 100% homeowner fee. It is important to the city. Looking at the pier, the pier is not going to happen on St. John's Bay. It's not. DNR is not going to allow it. It's an environmentally sensitive area, but what will happen, we'll keep spending money every year about talking about it. It's not going to happen. We put money aside. So it'll switch, and next we'll be talking about putting it at Oak Street so people can walk a little bit different from another direction. That's not going to go either. So we've spent all this money on something that's not going to happen. It'd be much more profitable for the city to put the money into dredging instead of talking about something that's not going to happen. It's not totally practical. If people can't get off their boat and drive downtown, they really don't want to be downtown, and certainly to benefit a few boats to be downtown. I live downtown. I can tell you, people drive here two and three hours to spend time in Della Field. So if people on the north side of the lake won't spend five minutes to get downtown, they didn't want to be there. Thank you.
Awesome. I think you had your hand up. Yep, come on up.
Good evening. Julie Hollingsworth, 813 Mill Street, H O L L I N G S W O R T H. And I've spoken before about the pier and my feelings on it. And I guess I would just like to say this evening, as you consider it, that, you know, every day we read about environmental events that take place, and humans are typically responsible for those. And I just hate to see our lake and especially that bay, which is a protected area, be impacted by the decision, you know, that you guys are facing. So I would ask your support in postponing, canceling the pier, and I think the residents there, excuse me, would totally appreciate that. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Or way in the back? Tag team, huh?
Hi. I'm Wendy Carstensen, 3249 Sylvester Drive.
Spell your last name, please.
C A R S T E N S E N. And I'm, wanted to, or he was going to talk about supporting the dredging. He knows more than I do.
My name's Randy Lepplah, L E P P L A. First of all, I appreciate that you're actually considering this because it is a problem. I think you know it's an ongoing problem. This is the same. So as far as the silt and what it's doing as far as filling in, that area is really, is actually a really dangerous area. We've run a boat aground there already. It's getting really packed, hard. You know, you've got the hazards around it, but between the boat slips and those areas, it's very difficult to get through. You're constantly turning up silt, potentially wrecking the motors of the boats, trying to get around that area. In the actual river system there, obviously, you've got to start looking upstream to try to deal with that because it will be a constant problem into the future. But even the river system right now that used to be four feet deep is six inches deep with three and a half feet of silt. So if there's anything that's hidden in there, such as logs, stuff like that, we end up destroying our motors. So part of that is just how we use the lake, how we access the lake. But the bigger issue is there's a, there's a danger at the end of that, and it's not going to get any better. So we'd appreciate if you would consider that and move forward.
Great. Thank you very much for the tag team comments. Anyone else, folks? Anyone else?
I have one from a neighbor.
I'm speaking for Ross and Chloe Wandschneider, W A N D S C H N E I D E R, 834 Mill Street. They are unable to be here because this morning, ironically, the topic they were going to talk about was our paramedics and our firefighters, and they had to call 911. They were in Oshkosh, and Ross was taken to the hospital. Chloe wrote some notes for me. She said, "Oshkosh does not have brownouts," so the angels of help arrived promptly. And what a wonderful feeling of comfort that help was near and arrived in a timely manner when needed. So they feel very strongly in support of funding and finding a way with our firefighters. The other thing that Chloe mentioned was the money that we have in the budget for the pier should be rejected. This service for the firefighters is what we need, but the pier is something like a traffic light. We need to stop. The citizens have spoken in multiple opportunities before this council and before the Economic Development Council, before Lake Welfare, before Parks and Rec, all in strong opposition. They, she asks, she's a clever writer, "To yield, yield to the citizens and to the DNR," all pointing to the conflicts of the impact on the bay, the quality of life to those on the bay, and the organisms that live and sustain the lake from the bay. She says, "To go, since there isn't a permit and the project is not based on need or safety, the obligation is to go for a no vote." Chloe closes with, "American democracy is that governing bodies respond to the people who have paid the taxes and speak truth, not to self-serving agendas." She also wishes you all to enjoy your holiday. Thank you.
Thank you much. All right. No one else? Seeing no other citizens' hands going up, citizens' comments are now closed. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Hafner?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like Item A to be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, with that being said, the item on the consent agenda is approval of the Lake Country Fire and Rescue line of credit renewal. Annually, the member municipalities pass a $500,000 line of credit available to Lake Country Fire and Rescue should they need it. They never have needed since we've been involved with LCFR since 2010. But the issue I want to bring up is, as I was reviewing the document on Friday, I realized that the long, the wrong percentage is in there for the city of Della Field as far as our allocation of costs. The percentages that were included in there are the fixed component of the cost allocation, and they failed to include the formula component. And so for the city of Della Field, our fixed component is 46%. But if you factor in the formula, our responsibility for costs is 41%. I talked to the fire chief about this on Friday and then again today. He asked that the city consider passing it as is because he said that all other member municipalities have already passed it and would have to take it up again. And he said that, he asked that we consider passing it as is and that the correction would be made next year when it comes for approval. The other thing that he mentioned is that if Lake Country Fire and Rescue does want to call in the line of credit, that does need to be approved by the fire board at that time. And so potentially, the city of Della Field representatives could correct the percentages at that time, which would be awkward for them from my perspective. So it's a little bit of an awkward issue, and, but I felt obliged to bring it to your attention.
I'd say a couple things. Thanks, Tom, for recognizing that. This line of credit has been accepted in the, with the fixed cost for a few years now, as you know, and has not, obviously has not been used. Having said that, if it were ever to be used, 2023 is likely a good candidate. So I don't object to pushing this back to Lake Country, but it would require also, like Tom said, going to each of the six other communities and asking them to edit it as well. It's a 4% difference?
5%.
Thank you.
And the problem with going back to the other municipalities to redo it is what? What is that problem?
Just inconvenience.
Well, I think that is, our 5% is the risk that we're taking and that we would be liable for more than our fair share.
Well, let me, let me also point out that, as the fire chief pointed out, is if they call in the line of credit, we're only liable if Lake Country Fire and Rescue doesn't pay it back. So they're, they're primarily responsible, but if they were to default, then the member municipalities become responsible.
What, what is the line of credit? What is the total?
It's $500,000. So the potential exposure is $25,000.
That's if they don't pay. It's a horse piece to me.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's that big an inconvenience, I guess, for other municipalities to make a correction at their next meeting.
I mean, it wasn't calculated right when the number they were given. It should be calculated right. Am I misunderstanding?
I don't know. I would, I wouldn't necessarily say it wasn't calculated right. They're using fixed costs, variable costs, obviously as variable year to year. And so they're leaning on that fixed component. Whether that's right or wrong, I guess, is debatable.
And I will say, we did approve it at 46% last year. I did not catch it last year.
Could we approve it tonight at 41 and let them correct it?
We could, yes.
Kind of move it along?
We could.
We know it's, we know what's right. Let's fix it.
Agreed.
$25,000 versus a little inconvenience. Let's fix it.
A lot has to go wrong to incur that cost.
Understood. Understood.
A lot. I'm not saying it's not possible.
The chances are very, very slight.
I mean, I think we need to...
I wouldn't, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I should say, I mean, if it's an error in, I think we need to correct it.
I wouldn't say it's an error. Tom might. It's just using the fixed cost versus...
So the IMA, the IMA does not specifically say which costs are to be used, but logic would tell you that costs are allocated to the communities based on the combination of the fixed and the formula. And so if there's additional costs incurred that are unexpected, wouldn't logic say that those would be allocated to the communities the same way?
Yeah, and that's the best point. So that's why I don't object to adjust it.
And we're talking about the difference for us is more than some of their entire obligation, correct? I mean, isn't, wasn't I...
For their annual obligation?
No, but their, aren't some of, like, ours is 41%. Isn't some of them as low as 3%? Was I reading that wrong?
Yeah, let me take the percentage.
What page is this on? I was reading it wrong.
I'm just pulling it up now.
10.
What's the lowest one? I thought there was some... Oh, here we go.
The Village of Akana Milwaukee is 3.5.
Yeah, the Village of Akana is 3.5. So the difference we're talking about is more than some, some of their entire obligation.
Right.
Right. So I think this is, I mean, if there's... I feel like if we take, if we pass this higher number and then it becomes an issue, it would be very hard to change it later.
I would agree.
Do you have?
I just want to piggyback on what Matt said about the litany of things that would have to go wrong to be in the situation where it would be, this would be called. I think the $25,000 number is the least of our worries at that point, as far as, because we'd be, we'd be wrestling over how to provide fire protection services to the city. Be nice to have all sorts of time, but I think it'd be, I'd prefer to put a, put a stake in the ground to say, "We need to fix this next year," even though we're, all sorts of things are coming to the head, coming to a head over the next few months here. But I don't know if this is, this is worth a battle at this moment. We need to, we need to go ahead with this with the fire, fire board over the course of the next, next months, not throw them a hot potato at the end of the year, even though it's an error. It's an, it's an error, in my opinion, but...
Do you expect this would be contentious? Like, is...
I would, I would, I would, in a normal year, no. I think it would be perceived as a minor road bump. In this year, and next year, and last year, after debates and argument and confrontation with other municipalities on 2020 surplus, on the use of fund balance, on the increased spending for the four- or five-year plan, it's another irritant for other communities.
What, what's the possibility of issuing a correction after the fact, making a motion to change this in February, at, when there's, you know what I mean?
Why is that any different than just correcting it right away?
I don't know. It isn't. It's, like I said, I'd...
It looks like Matt, like, he can just unmute himself and should pop right up to the front.
Chief Fennig?
Chief Fennig.
Yep. Thank you.
Not for much, sorry.
Do you think, uh... Low and dark. Uh, so nothing really changed. Went back and reviewed the agreement, and it's cloudy as to what, it just points to the funding formulas. So in the future, if this is the route that we want to go down, the actual percentage of the project, we should spell that out a little bit more clearly because the 46% is clearly defined, but the other parts of it aren't.
He said it says the funding formula.
It just points to Article 5. Let me get there, sorry. Which then directly points down to that fixed percentage with the other parts below it, so...
Chief, those other parts below it, though, includes, include, are within Section 5, correct?
Correct.
Besides being an irritant to other communities? Besides being an irritant to other communities, do you see any negative impact of making adjustment to this tonight?
I mean, I think your first comment was exactly correct. You know, I just point to the I think the municipal agreement is cloudy. And really, to Tom's point, you the city is the co-signer on the ball. And the reason that the city is a co-signer with the other seven municipalities is because LCFR has no means to collect funds or generate revenue other than potentially, we can't tax people, so that's why you have to be a co-signer on the ball. But it points to Article V, Section I, Para One, Para E. Which I know you probably don't have before.
I might.
Would would the correction require board activity? Fire board to convene?
That's another great point, Tim, is that the board approval is as well.
But what so a correction would need to go back to the board before it goes back to the other communities? That's why throughout February, as far as it's just a cycle, cycle time.
Now, what section of the agreement are you looking at?
Five. Point something.
Yeah, sorry, I'll look back too. I scroll over.
While Tom's looking that up, would this require renegotiation with Town Bank in any way? Or is that?
Yeah, the whole thing would have to be redone, Matt.
But we wouldn't anticipate that being a problem, given that it's just a minor adjustment to percentages.
Correct. Yeah, so Tom, I point Article V, Section I, Para One, Para E.
One more time, Matt, Section 5.
Article V.
Yep.
Section I, Lake I, Title.
Yeah, budget.
Yeah, Para One, Para E. Which then points down to the funding formula.
Yeah, it says each municipality's annual financial contribution to the fire department operating budget should be based on the following, A, the fixed portion, and B, the formula portion.
Have a long night, folks. Let's hopefully we can get a motion here and get moving along.
So that is I'll I'll make a motion to to approve the Lake Country Fire and Rescue line of credit renewal with the city's portion being adjusted to 41%. 41.
Yeah, I don't know if that's an exactly 41.0%, so why don't you say the?
The the funding formula, including both variable and fixed expense. Good? Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have any reason to believe the other communities would object to that? It sounds like they shouldn't.
It's in the agreement. It's what we all signed.
I feel like in the past, when we've if it's been an oversight, that's one thing, but to approve it, knowing that there's an error is a very different thing. So that's kind of acknowledging that that's accepting it, and I'm not comfortable doing that. So I think that we need to correct it.
Matt says it's been done this way in past years, but it's truly just been one year.
If you characterize it as an error, they shouldn't object. If you characterize it any other way, then.
Well, your motion stated exactly what's in the in the agreement.
It did. That's why I made it.
Yeah, I think that we need to correct it if we feel it's an error, then yeah, I think it needs to be corrected.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Great, we move on to eight boards, committees, and commissions, A licenses, anything, Riley? Nope. Okay, then we'll move on to B, planning commission.
All right, we've got several items that I will I describe as it's more housekeeping than anything else. There's nothing really new that you haven't seen before. So with item 2A, this is Elm Brook Church, talking about, we've talked about conditional use that they've had. We're just catching it up to what they've actually been doing, along with the idea that they've had some outdoor activities associated with the school that they've that has been using their premises. Talked to some of their neighbors even, and there's no objection to this, and this was recommended for approval. So I will make a motion for item 2A to recommend the amendment to the conditional use for Elm Brook Church.
I'll second.
To approve it.
Did you second, Jackie?
I'll second.
Oh.
She beat me. I was.
Danielle seconded?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
And the next couple are in relation to Hawthorne Farm. There was a some interaction with the state regarding the use of a outbuilding, which is just a it's really an ornamental feature, which is a barn. If you haven't seen it, it's beautiful. But it is required through some state interference, however, meddling to have a driveway and access to it, which also included need for ADA parking. Am I correct? And so at their expense, they're doing this, and it does amend the fact that we require that they not have parking because we didn't want it to be used as an event facility. It's not equipped to be an event facility. It doesn't have insulation.
Right.
And so this is something we're just allowing them to alter their specific implementation plan to accommodate the state's request to have the driveway that was used to to construct it be a permanent access point from Oakwood from Nashota Road. And this was recommended for approval by the planning commission as well. I will make I will reinforce that with a motion to update the the specific implementation plan to allow for driveway entrance at at the Hawthorne Farm property.
That one.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
Same thing. This is because of the developers' agreement, we need to allow for a driveway entrance. It's the same thing, just going applying it to the developers' agreement. So I'll make a motion for that same subject property at Hawthorne Farm to update the developers' agreement as stated in item 2C.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
And item 2D is the same property, and this is approving something that's been reviewed by our attorney, and this is just reinforcing the public trail and emergency access and sanitary sewer easements on the property. So I'll make a motion to do that as well.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
And item 2F, I believe this is dealing with the stormwater maintenance agreement and drainage easements, and Tom has something.
2E, right?
2E, I'm sorry.
So just, Tim, we're moving on to addition number one now, so we're at the other side of this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yep.
All right, so now we're on the south side of the road.
Yep.
This is to approve an emergency access easement for addition number one. This is to allow for a fire truck entrance, and it actually enhances the walkability of the area, even though they didn't want to do it. It just got the cul-de-sac was too long by about 20 feet or something for the fire hoses to reach, so they had to put this in. So it's a nice trail for the for the residents and the city expenses for the developer. So I'll make a motion to approve the emergency access easement to allow the addition number one property.
Go ahead. We're going down the road.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
All right, item 2F.
This one we have a change on.
I'll defer to Tom on an update to this.
Yes, item F is the stormwater maintenance agreement for Hawthorne Farm addition number one, and it was brought to our attention today that this was supposed to include the stormwater pond on this on the property that was dedicated to the city that'll be owned by the city. Chris is showing you there, and it was not included. And so in order to incorporate that, I'm recommending two changes to this document, and you could approve it conditionally, subject to these two changes. The first change is in the first whereas clause, it talks about consisting of 13 lots and one outlot, and changing that to consisting of 13 lots and two outlots, known as Outlet Six and Outlet Seven. The second change would be to add the basin details for stormwater infiltration basin number 5B to exhibit C. If we make those two changes, then we would properly incorporate the stormwater pond on the city property, which is the developer's responsibility to maintain. I got that right, Chris?
Correct.
All right.
Ooh, is the motion crafter.
I will move to approve.
I would that one.
With the recommended changes.
You got those? Yep. The first whereas clause needs to be revised to say consisting of 13 lots and two outlots, known as Outlet Six and Outlet Seven. Yep. And the second change is we need to add the basin details for stormwater infiltration basin number 5B to exhibit C. Correct.
Motion to approve the stormwater maintenance agreement, including drains drainage easements for Hawthorne Farm addition number one development, and to incorporate the change to include the first whereas clause to be updated to consisting of 13 lots and two outlots, known as Outlet Six and Outlet Seven, and to add the basin details for stormwater infiltration basin number 5B to exhibit C.
Perfect.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
And just to clarify, that was Henry and Schaefer on the first and second? Thank you.
All right, item 2G, same development, addition one for Hawthorne Farms. This is to approve the final plat approval, which was recommended for approval unanimously by the planning commission on October 26th. So I will make a motion to do exactly that. And that's to approve the final plat approval.
Sorry.
Who hit the second?
Mark. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
We're going across the lake to Nagawica Heights.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And so this is for, like I said, Nagawica Heights, and this is to approve the public trail easement that's proposed for being to as a conditional approval, subject to the legal description of map exhibits being finalized following construction approved by the city staff as being in acceptable form. Want to put that in English, Tom?
Yeah, so it's both the there's two easements here, a public trail easement and a utility easement for storm sewer. The utility easement is in final form, and the public trail easement, the language is all there, but we just need to, after construction, update the legal description in the map to make sure that the easement coincides precisely with where the path gets constructed in case there's some minor tweaks in the field. I got that right, Rob?
Yes.
All right.
Is there any any changes to anything that the planning commission's approved as far as the layout or the trail pass or anything like that?
No, we're just, I mean, it's going to go where they graded it.
Yeah. All right, well, I'm comfortable with that. So I'll make a motion to approve the public trail easement and utility stormwater easements for the Nagawica Heights development as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
And again, we need to have a stormwater maintenance agreement.
And we're on aye?
Yes. So item 2a, so I'll make a motion to approve the stormwater maintenance agreement, including drainage easements for the Nagawica Heights development.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
Okay, now, item 2J, final plat approval for the Nagawica Heights development, which was already approved, recommended for approval by the planning commission unanimously. So I will make the motion to take that recommendation and approve the final plats for Nagawica Heights.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
Unless unless. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Unless you're a neighbor of these properties, you don't see this as a big development. It doesn't, you know, as far as property wise, it's really not, but it's something that's been on the plats for a long time, is what development looks like, is 10 items on the planning commission report. So aside from that, we haven't had a planning commission meeting since our last council meeting, but I'd encourage everyone to look at the agenda. Should be out. Boy, is it going to be out on Friday? No.
Hopefully tomorrow.
Tomorrow, it's going to be so check the city website for the the planning commission agenda for the end of the last Wednesday of the month, because we will have some discussion about the properties on the east side of the lake along 83 as far as how we'd be recommending or what we what will evolve into a possible change to the land use plan. So there's that's been evolving and had lots of open discussions over the past several months, so look for that. That's probably the biggest thing that's coming our way. So with that, I'm done with planning commission.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, Lake Welfare Committee, Mr. Price.
We won't be meeting for two more weeks.
Okay. Park and Rec, Entry Board.
No updates since our last meeting.
Okay, moving right along, E, Public Works, Mr. Grimmer.
No meeting, no report.
All right, F, Delahart, Mr. Iker.
We have a new, boy, I'm going to mess up her title. We have wrote we have a new Rose. She's she's on board. She's she's started. We'll be meeting her next week at our next Delahart meeting. So she's our treasurer and really the finance director for Delahart. So tough person to replace, but we've done it, and we'll see how it goes. Aside from that, we've got all more updates about our upgrades that were coming for next year. So I'll wait till January, fill you in on what we're doing over at Delahart.
And when has Rose have a specific date, or is she just a we're talking a few months or six months?
No, not months, no, weeks. She's going to help train the new person.
Oh, okay, so it'll be a quick train.
And she's super nice, so we're trying to be friendly with her as she leaves, so she helps her person out if she gets a call on like a weird Wednesday or something on the line. So I don't have a specific end date, but it's it's not indefinitely.
Okay, great, thank you. G, Police Commission, Ms. Valdi.
There's been no meeting since the last one, and you saw our wonderful new officers, so that's it for now.
Okay. All right, H, Library Board, Ms. Henry.
We did have a meeting, but I had two meetings at one time, so I was not I did not attend the library, so I refer you to the minutes.
Got it. Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals, Jackie, I don't believe they met. Zoning Board of Appeals, Jack, I don't believe they met. Promotion and tourism, Mark.
No meeting since our last meeting.
Okay. Okay, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, no meeting that I'm aware of. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, Mr. Grimmer.
The board met on November tenth, approved the town bank line of credit, approved the final twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six staffing plan, which we will be debating and discussing in future meetings, and was alerted to possible conditions that may be placed on what's come to be known as the Village of Oconomowoc Lake Plan that is being debated tonight.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to M, Deer Management Committee, Ms. Henry.
We met last week and did a lot of discussion. We are looking at some new placement for, hopefully some new deer stands in some areas that are problematic in the city. We also talked about incentive programs to try to encourage people to get some younger kids, and to encourage generational hunting, and more than just, they get the younger kids involved and get more people out there. So far, I believe we've had ten reported deer harvested from our city, so we're hoping that will increase as they start to move, so.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, move on to Mayor's Report. Just like to again thank Deb Smith for the, all the work she puts into the Christmas tree lighting event, went off very well again this year. Number eleven, New Business, A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two and Resolution Relating to the Leveing of Special Assessment for Public Improvements to Gulf Road.
Yeah, I'll kick this one off real quick. In twenty twenty, the city levied special assessments against the properties adjacent to Gulf Road for the Roundabout Project. As part of that resolution, included a clause that, in the case that any of the properties were sold, the special assessments came due upon the sale of the property. Before that, they were allowed to pay over a ten-year installment plan, and there is a pending sale of the building that includes the Best Buy store and the building that includes the Panera Restaurant, and they are being purchased by Hendrick's Commercial Properties. And what happens is, the owner of the property passes along the special assessment to each of the tenants, and when that's done with one-tenth every year, it's affordable for the tenants, and if everything became due all at once, it would be unaffordable for the tenants. And so the request being made is to allow the new owner to continue paying the remainder of the installment plan, which works for the city, it's not, doesn't harm the city in any way, the actual interest rate, which is over three percent that we receive on that, is higher than we make on our investments. And so my recommendation would be to go ahead and approve the resolution. I don't know if you gentlemen have anything to add to that?
Thank you, Mr. Hafner. I'm Stuart Wongard, CEO of Wongard Partners, and with me is Mr. Tim Voller, General Counsel for Wongard Partners, Mr. Mayor, members of the common council, staff, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Is there any legal fees that the city has to deal with to make this change?
So there has been legal fees incurred, and those are being passed on.
Okay, that was my concern, so. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two, specific to the levying of special assessments for Gulf Road.
Second.
Was that Grimmer?
Grimmer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention passes.
See how easy it can be sometimes?
Thanks for all, and just because we're selling doesn't mean we're leaving Delafield, we're members of Lake Country, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to eleven B, Discussion and Possible Action to Utilize one nine seven point one nine six of the city's seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the purpose of replacing lost revenue due to the pandemic and using it in support of the twenty twenty-three budget to provide government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue, more specifically for police department wages and salaries to provide public safety services. Tom?
Yeah, so this is the plan that the council approved last year, and it would be appropriate to continue approving any usage of the funds each time that comes up. So again, this is twenty-five percent of the city's total allocation, which we intended to do every year for four years. If there is any thought of changing that amount for this budget for any reason, the city could push this item back to after the budget approval, if anyone is interested in that, otherwise it makes sense to follow the course we outlined and continue to use twenty-five percent each year for four years.
I'll make a motion to utilize the twenty-five percent of the ARPA funding for the aforementioned utilization for wages, salaries, public safety services.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions passes. All right, eleven C, Discussion and Possible Action on Proposed Twenty Twenty-Three City of Delafield Operating Budgets, Capital Budget, Tax Levy, and Lake Country Fire and Rescue Funding Decisions. Tom?
This is where the council usually talks about where they want to start, if they want to start on operating in capital, or capital. Some years we do one, some the other, but I'd leave that discussion up to the council on where we start.
I'm good with making a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three operating budget, so we can go on to discuss it and edit it appropriately.
I'll second. All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Not on that, there's no.
Yeah, no idea, I've got, I've got.
Oh, you just, oh, gotcha, gotcha, I thought you were ready to vote the whole thing.
Well, yeah, I've been ready for a couple of months.
That'd be too easy.
Yeah. So I, I have a suggestion that, that I've been kicking around, and it has a lot to do with, I looked back at previous budgets, I was looking for other, you know, this historical information on a couple of different topics, but Tom provides a really good summary letter stating the, you know, kind of the state of the city. And each department has its own, its own letter, and one of the, one of the departments that, that I kind of shifted to with the different changes that have been going on and looked at pretty closely was DPW budget, and understanding that there's, we're at a point where there's certain service levels that aren't getting accomplished, when we talk about flushing of the hydrants or the, or the, some of the, some of the water, water pipes. So that's concerning, as well as some of the discussion about the added amenities, where we're putting more work on a, on a, on a department that has been asking for, I think it went from a strong suggestion in about two thousand eight to more of a request and a plea in recent months, or recent budgets, for an additional person. And just with labor situations, we've got people that are on staff doing lake weed cutting, because people don't want to work, get a suntan for thirteen dollars an hour these days to cut weeds on the lake. But, you know, all those things considered, also with just the, the state of wage inflation in general and competition for good workers. In our budget, we've got a two and a half percent wage increase across our, our city staff, and I, and I think that's fair based on the situation we've been in, in our budget for the last couple of years, but I do recall a couple of years back, it was three or four, we asked staff to do without, and, you know, we all wrote checks that were here on council to refund some of our exorbitant fund, you know, payment that we get. But that, you know, in, in, as much as when I started on council about twelve or thirteen years ago, it was really our intent, and we did what it took to make things equitable, saying, fire department, police department, DPW, library, administration, they're all on the same page. Certain things threw that askew, some of it was who was union, who wasn't over time, and that kind of broke our formula, and so this equity thing is kind of tough, and it, 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 it does mess with morale. But I was looking specifically at, you know, the head count in different departments, we did some things to bolster fire, the police over the years. Library's done a shift with some, moving some part-time positions to full-time positions, and they've had the ability to do that because they're kind of a siloed budget. And our, our city administration staff has, they've been in the same boat as DPW, but we've had more of a turnover in that department, not, not intentionally, it just sort of happened over the last couple of years, so most, many of them are newer than a lot of our DPW. Anyways, I'm going a long way to say, I'd like to do something different for two thousand twenty-three, propose something different for DPW, and that would be to have a stipend sent their way to change their compensation, at least for two thousand twenty-three, from two and a half percent raise to a five percent raise, and have half of that be, the two and a half percent be something that's done specific to two thousand twenty-three, so it's not incremental increase permanently in the future, it'd be really to say we recognize the fact that they're doing more with fewer people because of the, or the same number of people. And I asked Amy and Tom to, Amy did all the work, I think, Tom just gave some suggestions, as far as come up with something of what that would look like and where the money would come from. So that's, what I'm proposing is an alteration, it ends up costing about sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
And ninety-nine cents.
Yeah. So I don't know if there's a, if there's a graphic for it, if you, if you could explain where the funds would come from if the council thought that was a good idea.
Yeah, so what Tim is proposing, and we kind of rounded that two and a half percent, and what it would be is for the two different public works foremen, it would be a nineteen hundred dollar bonus, for the six maintenance workers that have been here long-term, it would be a seventeen hundred dollar bonus. When you add those dollar amounts and you add the payroll tax amounts that would be incorporated with something like that, it would be the sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Of that amount, about eighty-six hundred dollars would be from the general fund, and we'd have to find a way to fund that. The remainder would come out of the utilities, and they could pay for that themselves with their revenues. And for the eighty-six hundred dollars then, the proposal is that you could increase the sewer tax equivalent by that amount.
So thoughts? So, actually, all right, go ahead.
You said funding, increasing the sewer tax by the equivalent amount?
Right.
For eighty-six hundred, okay. And it's been, and I would reiterate, you do write a great state of the city, and I always reference that, it's the first thing I go to. And recalling that, that document, you said it's been fifteen years since we last hired?
Two thousand eight is the last time, last time we added a position to the Public Works Department.
Would they, would, I'm sorry, one, one last question, would DPW, would the DPW staff sooner appreciate this one-time bonus, or would they prefer an additional staff member in twenty twenty-four?
Think they would ask if both is an option.
That was an easy question.
I can't answer that question for them. I know they've never asked me for, well, let me restate that, those two newer employees that we worked with this year to bring them up to a market comparable rate, but besides that, they've never voiced that they feel that their compensation isn't inadequate, but that they vehemently express that, that we're very shorthanded with regards to staff.
And how many candidates did we have apply to those positions?
For this year, when we filled a position? We had thirty candidates apply, and we had two candidates that we felt were excellent.
And and we have made special distributions, compensation to administrative staff, clerk staff, to recognize going above and beyond, have we not, several times in the last few years?
We have, including just recently, within the last couple of months.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, I have to agree with you, the work, work done by the DPW people has been great. I've been closely associated with a number of them in a couple of projects that we've had in the last, last couple of years. The fact that they're excellent employees and long-term people, I'd be very much in favor of trying to keep them as competitive as possible.
And, and so just to rationalize why, I think it's, I think there's so many things moving in our budget right now with our fire and rescue and that, that I think that having this as a, something specific to two thousand twenty-three gives us some flexibility to perhaps apply that same number, should something happen that we're able to hire a new person to supplement their staff, or they wouldn't get that same thing in two thousand twenty-four necessarily. So that's, I'm just, look, looking to help circle the wagons and keep morale up, is really what I'm, that's, that's the intent behind, or the logic behind it. And those of you that followed me or know me from past budgets, I'm usually not the one leading the charge to raise wages.
Is there any possibility of mission creep? Okay, we did this for DPW, now office staff are looking for a similar bump increase, albeit we've, we've given that in the past? It's hard to speculate on that, but.
That was gonna be our response, is we've really addressed, the administrative staff has been put through some difficult times with retirements and resignations and whatnot, and we've been shorthanded, and the council has considered that and has made some appropriate actions recently to address that.
Yeah, I think that the council has acted very responsibly in the past, and. Okay.
Well, I will make a motion to amend the twenty twenty-three operating budget to include a, sure, how to say, a nineteen hundred dollar stipend.
Hold on, hold on.
You want to do a percentage?
Yeah, nineteen hundred dollars for the foreman.
Nineteen hundred dollars for the foreman and seventeen hundred dollars for the six long-term maintenance workers.
Yeah.
According to the formula, the, the funding distribution is described by Tom.
With the general fund component being funded from the additional sewer tax equivalent?
Correct.
I'll second that.
Jack, he seconded it?
I did.
Okay, are you, got that wording clear there, Molly? You want to read it back, or?
Missed like the last part of it. Have according to, the nineteen hundred dollars for the foreman and the seventeen hundred dollars for the maintenance workers, according to the funding formula suggested by Administrator Hafner, and then I lost the last part of it.
With the eighty-six hundred dollars in the general fund to be provided, to be funded by an increase of that amount to the sewer tax equivalent. I doing okay, Amy?
Do you want the exact dollar amount?
Are you going to say $8,599.11? I'm good with 8,600.
And as a matter, as a matter of discussion, and I'd leave it at the, the public works director's discretion as far as how that's distributed over the year.
Can we, are you adding that to the motion?
Yeah.
I think, I would ask.
I'll amend, I'll amend the motion to, to include that it's distributed at the discretion of the Department of Public Works Director.
Second, are you good with that?
I am.
And I think that's an important.
So if it's quarterly, weekly, however you want to.
If you have someone that you know is thinking about leaving for greener pastures or whatnot.
Split it up.
All right. Is there any discussion?
So this is.
Oh, I guess we're in discussion.
In part by the sewer and water tax.
Correct.
And the remainder is TBD.
What's that?
And the remainder is to be determined.
So I can tell you, so $2,917.03 to be funded by the water utility rates, $4,690.90 to be funded by the sewer utility rates, and $347.95 to be funded by the stormwater utility rates.
And that covers the entire need?
The full amount.
Okay.
So, in a practical sense, this, for lack of a better word, buys morale engagement. We're not, and is, I guess, in a larger sense, fair, equitable, given the current inflationary environment? Is that an accurate description?
That's the general intent, yeah.
All right. Any other comments? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
I have nothing else for the, I have nothing else for the operating budget.
Can we address my memo in the packet regarding additional workers' compensation premium?
Okay.
So the city, after the budget was published and after the budget workshop, we received notice of our estimated workers' comp premium for next year. And the significant change is next year, it will include the, the city of Dellafield officer that was involved in the Holiday Inn police shooting incident will be factored in for the first year, next year. So that officer will be factored into our workers' comp mod for 2023, 2024, and 2025. The Village of Heartland officer, his case has not yet closed, so that is not yet factored into our rates. And so our rates did go up by a total of about $7,300. And just over $6,000 of that is in the general fund. In addition to this issue, we also became aware of another very minor issue. One of the adjustments to our levy limit is for refunded or rescinded taxes as certified by the Wisconsin Department of Revenue. And that number came in $86, $86 higher than our previous estimate. So we're recommending that we, that we do levy that additional $86. And that we use that $86 plus an additional $5,931.61 in sewer tax equivalent to fund the additional workers' comp insurance premium in the general fund.
I'll make a motion to fund the additional workers' comp expense utilizing $59.31.61 to the sewer tax plus the $86.
Dollars.
To, to fund the workers' comp increase.
I'll second that.
Who had the second?
I did.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
So our issue that we definitely do need to tackle as part of the operating budget is the late country fire and rescue funding. Would we want to get into that now, or are there other issues to take up first?
Let's knock out a big nut right away.
Unless there's something else, I'd like to, you know, tackle it.
Yeah. So it boils down to, we know how much we're contributing to late country fire and rescue with regards to the CPI plus 2% amount. And the question becomes, are we going to approve that to be used in the traditional sense with the capital amount to be used for capital and the operating to be used for operating? Or do we want to approve what's been called the Village of Condamawak Lake Plan, which would involve the city approving our capital funds to be used towards operating in 2023? And to approve LCFR utilizing a lower $400,000 of their fund balance towards operating for 2023, with the issue of $250,000 of that fund balance belonging to the LCFR three communities, ourselves, Sheniqua, and Neshota, with about $200,000 of that $250,000 belonging to the city of Dellafield. And if we're going to approve the Village of Condamawak Lake Plan, are we going to put any kind of constraint or contingency on some kind of a written agreement regarding repayment of that fund balance usage?
So does that, does that decision actually alter our operating budget if we were just to stick with, is that, how are these, how are these intertwined? I mean, I under, so are we passing two different things, right?
Same dollar amount, it's just the contingencies.
It doesn't affect the funding of our operating budget whatsoever. It's just, the only decision is our approval of how LCFR can use the funds that the city is contributing to them in 2023.
So, so with, I mean, we've got a motion for the operating budget. The decision on the, going ahead with approval of the fire and rescue plan, that's a, that's a separate item that needs to be approved, or it has to be approved with, in the context of the operating budget?
I'm strongly recommending that the city, that the council should make a specific motion saying how they intend for their contributions to LCFR to be used for 2023.
As a part of our motion to approve the operating budget?
Sure.
Okay.
So the issues, some of the issues associated with this plan are, at least, the big ones is, do we put a contingency on the use of the fund balance? And are we utilizing, are we essentially, you know, we're, I know we will be discussing in the weeks ahead, further funding, but essentially, this money is intended to staff, to bring up staff, staff that could end up being an unfunded staff in 2024. A few of the issues related to that contingency, the utilization of the contingency, like we've discussed on this council before, the 2020 surplus that I think we all were in agreement, and six of the seven municipalities were in agreement, that that surplus was rightly the ownership of Dellafield, that wasn't returned to the city because of one municipality voting against it. Now we have a similar utilization of a fund balance. But there are a few differences with this one, and I just want to lay it out so folks understand what they're, what, what they're voting for. And the, the difference with this utilization of this fund balance is that while of the $250,000 belonging to the original three, Sheniqua, Neshota, Dellafield, both Sheniqua and Neshota have indicated their intent to utilize the entirety of the fund balance for this VOL plan. A question that I would have is if we were to put a contingency on this, would that, a contingency being, okay, you have to pay back that fund balance to the city, you have to pay back the city's portion, would that, under the IMA, require that those two out of, or all three of those communities be in agreement to that? That has been a, a discussion point. And Sheniqua and Neshota have already indicated their unwillingness to go along with the distribution of those funds in any other way other than to the VOL plan.
And they don't want it back.
And they don't want it back either.
So in the context of the intent of this fund balance?
Yes.
And the fact that prior to future other mergers, okay, so we got the original three people of LCFR, was there a plan or intent to refund that fund balance to the three municipalities?
With the creation of IMA VII, and Tom and Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there was no specific identification in IMA VII, the new creation of the seven, to distribute that fund balance. However, it was marked as such as quote, belonging to the city, belonging to Sheniqua, belonging to Neshota.
Let me clarify a little bit. There's two different fund balances at LCFR. There's a unassigned fund balance and an assigned fund balance. The unassigned fund balance is that $212,000 that existed at the end of 2020, that was not specified in the IMA to be returned to the original three communities, but that there was definitely intentions for a memorandum of understanding to be executed to return that.
Soon after.
With the assigned fund balance, there is specific assignment of those funds to Dellafield, Sheniqua, and Neshota in writing in past board minutes, where according to the LCFR's auditor, those funds belong to those three communities definitively.
And that's $38,000?
No, that's $250,000 in total.
So there's 213 and 250?
Yep.
Okay.
So my question though, is that if the communities of Sheniqua and Neshota have already publicly stated that they have no intent to redistribute that money to the, back to the respective communities or pay it back, does the city, I mean, under, does the city have standing? And would it require mitigation?
Why won't the city, why won't the city at a minimum request that some kind of an agreement be established that says, in the future, when the LCFR fund balance reaches X level, whether that's 600,000, 800,000, a million, that that fund balance be returned to the three communities? If two of the communities don't want it back, they can donate it back to LCFR.
The challenge, I don't necessarily disagree. The challenge is it is, unfortunately, it is getting later and later. And as was expressed, and I brought this fact up in our board meeting last week, that there may be contingencies. And just so the council's aware, that, that the response to, you know, my informing the other municipalities that approval of the VOL plan may come with contingencies of repayment in some form, was met with comments that none of the municipalities plan on meeting again, or I shouldn't say none of the municipalities, one of the municipalities or two of the municipalities stated that they don't plan on meeting again to discuss this issue. They are passing the VOL plan without contingencies. Because if the city of Dellafield tonight, and don't get me wrong, I'm not taking a position on this necessarily, but if the city of Dellafield tonight passes a plan with a contingency that has to go back to every municipality to do the same. And to say, yes, we agree with the city of Dellafield, we will approve the VOL plan with a repayment structure in place.
But that doesn't necessarily have to get done in November or December. That was my preference, and that was my recommendation, that a written agreement be established before tonight. But what the fire chief countered with, and you can certainly speak with him tonight, what he countered with is instead of having something in place by tonight, what about the contingency that no hiring will be done until that written agreement is established?
That was, I'm sorry, that was from the chief?
It was. But he would, it was, it was him speaking for himself, not, not from the, from the board. And.
Let me revisit one, like the intent of my question, what, the fact that we had this quarter million dollars in, in the LCFR before IM, what is it, IMA VII? Was that what it was called?
IMA III, IMA VII.
In IMA III, we've got, there's a quarter million dollars in there from the participating communities at the time. Was there any expectation or timeline where that money was scheduled to be returned to these three communities?
No.
So, so the idea in my, so I, that's what I thought. So the, the fact that it's this rainy day fund is the intent of a, of this contingency fund, doesn't change the fact that they need to have the same fund replenished moving forward, because they're rating it next year. They've got, you can't operate, you know, a four or five million dollar operation with variable revenues based on call rates and stuff and compensation for those calls and different hospital contracts, without having some money to tap into to even your budget out month to month. And I don't think that the, with this, with all, with IMA VII, I don't think the appropriate level for that fund is a quarter million dollars. I think it should be greater than that. I mean, I think that the three communities that put in the quarter million dollars should be the la, should be the first communities to join back to the replenishment of the fund, once it reaches a quarter million dollars replenished by the people who jumped in and helped rate it. In other words, the reestablishment of that fund moving forward should start with the other four municipalities contributing up to a quarter million dollars. And then we get back in the game and fill it to where it should be, according to the formula. That's, that's what I think I would like to see.
So if we go to a universal fire fee where everyone pays the same, then you'd be expecting the other municipalities to make contributions to fund balance in addition to the fire fees that their residents are paying?
Well, those contributions could come in the form of surpluses, if any exist.
How, how else would it get there? I mean, if we switch to a fire fee, aren't we, we're moving, we're moving down a different track. But we switched to a fire fee, aren't we, wouldn't we include in that fee the, the need for the, the surplus or the contingency fund?
Well, we don't now.
Well, depends how you look at it. Well, depends how you look at it.
I don't know. How else do you get it? You just ask for it and we just, I mean, I understand that's how it was established. We need a contingency fee, we started feeding into it. But, yeah, so I'm saying that the contribution, that contingency fee needs to be set at a certain level, that, like, we set ours at 20% for the city. They need theirs set at whatever it needs to be set at, and I don't think the city of Dellafield, Neshota, or Sheniqua should be paying that first $250,000 to replenish it, because that's what was there when they started, when they joined. But I don't think that getting it back later, once it reaches a certain level after we put in to a certain level, I don't know. Makes it, we're paying ourselves.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the, I don't know, I don't see that money as coming back to the city. Like, I don't see the need to insist on that money being paid back to the city, but I do see, like, I like to see that stay in the fund or be replenished into the fund. And I agree that, once this is spent and then it's at zero, everybody paying back into it at the same rate isn't really practical. I mean, what, to your point, is, we should get some credit for what we've already put into it in the future, for getting, replenishing the...
I think what Tim's trying to say, in just a very high-level view, the three communities that existed had cash in the bank.
Right.
Four new cities, communities came in, brought no cash.
Right.
Right? And now they're operating and spending the cash that was there from the three.
Yeah.
I mean, that's as simple as you can put it.
Yeah.
Everybody brought assets, but the city, Neshota, and Sheniqua brought cash.
Right. I just, yeah, as far as the repayment goes, I think that's a tough word, because it's, I don't know that that's necessarily the right word, but yes, just replenishing the fund, I think, is important to focus on. I do think that there needs to be some credit given to the city, that we're, we've already funded so much of this, that when it starts to get replenished in the future, that that needs to be, we need to be receiving the credit for that.
My point is, if we're heading towards a universal fee, which is what LCFR staff is trying to direct things towards, then in the future, everybody will be contributing at the same percentage, if we're just talking about the fire fees. So, there would not be a case of the other four communities contributing towards fund balance.
So, you're saying the universal fire fee formula would be, all the communities combined, you divide the budget by seven, and everyone gets their seventh that they pay?
No, all the communities combine and divide the total budget by the number of fire service equivalents, which is basically, every single family house is one, and then a square foot basis on how much equivalent commercial properties are.
I think that, yeah, the rooftop fee.
In simple terms?
The rooftop.
Rooftop.
So, how, like, we're trying to make a decision on what ifs?
Right.
How likely is that to occur? Because if that occurs, that changes the idea of...
I mean, it...
What the contribution rates are for each city. It's not, it would skew it a little bit, I mean, Dellafield would benefit from the universal fee, unless I'm mistaken.
Yeah.
It looks like a universal formula, based on, as far as what percentage we pay in. A percentage would likely go down. Is that right? Is that accurate?
Significantly.
So, I mean, so then that, where that replenishment of the funds comes from is a different, that would be taken into consideration. If our future contribution percentage goes down as a result of this, that $200,000 would likely come back to us in a different form over 10 years, in lower fees.
And let's get something in writing over the next few months outlining that.
We need it in the next few weeks, if we're looking at an April referendum. I don't see that happening. That's what we're going to be talking about next.
I don't know that that clarified anything about how we execute the operating budget. I mean, the idea would be...
The question is, what contingencies? Are we going to put any of these three possible contingencies on the CPI plus 2%? That's the question.
And what you're saying is, if we get the rooftop fee, we're happy to donate, contribute more than, contribute our 200,000?
It accomplishes what I said.
Yeah.
It accomplishes what I said. You know, our contribution to the $250,000 will be there. I mean, instead of us contributing into it, we'll be paying slightly less as a community, so it'll come back to us over the course of time.
And I agree. However, that path would require us to be proactive and say, instead of pushing forward with a referendum, that we push forward instead with the rooftop fee and be proactive, but...
But we don't have that in...
We don't have, we need six other communities.
We don't have that in writing.
I know we don't. I know we don't.
Let's not be negotiating for the other side. We can always remove the contingency.
I like negotiating a better deal for the city.
A fair deal.
And I think a fairer deal.
A fair deal.
And that is the rooftop plan.
And we can put a contingency on tonight, and if we get that fair rooftop deal, then we can rescind it.
So, what do we need to know as far, what are we still waiting on as far as to know if the rooftop fee is going to go forward?
We need cooperation, we need agreement with the other six municipalities, we need agreement with all municipalities that, the leadership position that they are agreeable to whatever formula comes out in the rooftop.
And when is that happening?
The chief is negotiating with Tom, and negotiating with Rich, and negotiating with Vickler, and all the other community leaders, and Ron Troy and the town. And I've expressed that, yeah, we need that. If there's going to be a rooftop fee, it has to happen before we vote on a referendum, because if the city votes, if the citizens vote down a referendum, I'm very much inclined not to revisit something else. If they say no to increasing staffing, I'm very much disinclined to go back and say, okay, we're going to increase taxes on you.
Right.
When they just told us no. So, that's the urgency, in my mind.
So, are we voting on it tonight?
Not the...
We're just talking about the CPI plus 2% and the contingencies. That's all we're voting on tonight.
I just, it's hard with their, with this...
I know, a lot of balls. It's hard to keep track of all the balls.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to address that, with, when it, well, if this happens, then this, and if that happens, then that.
So, Tom, yeah, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, we can pass this clean and say, yes, we support the VOL plan, and you're going to use the city of Dellafield's fund balance, and so be it. We're happy soldiers to commit to funding the fire department and maintain staffing, increase staffing to prevent brownouts. Or alternatively, we can say, no, we're going to put, we're going to attach a string here, but that has consequences. And if, just like with the line of credit, if we place a contingency on the VOL plan, that has to go back to all six other municipalities, and they have to approve that as well. And so, and we need a budget, and the board has to approve it as well before that. And the budget, you know, it's November 21st, and you got, time is not on our side.
Okay, so, if the rooftop plan does not move forward, then we're looking at either, we're looking at funding it, just however we're funding it. So, I'm looking at, what are the scenarios? So, if the rooftop plan does not happen, then what is the most likely alternative to that?
Then this council has to vote whether we push the 2024 through 2026 staffing plan to referendum.
And just as a reminder of what we're talking about, and these are just rough numbers, but if we continue with a fire fee based on the existing IMA and the city sharing that, in 2026, that rooftop fee would be 900 and some dollars. If we're able to get a universal rooftop fee in 2026, it would be about 500 and some dollars.
Okay, so, I'm going to, I'm going to throw this out, like, where I'm at on this. If we're not going to do a universal fee, I don't see any way of doing this without a referendum. Like, I would think that this needs to go to referendum if we're not doing universal.
That's the message that's been delivered by staff to LCFR.
Right. That's where I'm at on this.
And that's providing some of the motivation to go to a universal fee.
So, that being said, if we're going to, if we're going to pass something tonight, not knowing if there is going to be a universal, I would say, whatever we pass tonight needs to assume that that's not happening, and that we can change it if it does. That would be my position on it. So, that would, in my opinion, I think that means conditions on what it looks like, and that we would be going to referendum.
The VOL plan is our short-term stopgap. The referendum or tax or fire fee is the long term. Does that long-term solution impact the VOL decision? I mean, it's sort of a, can we look at it separately? Say, okay, do we want to do the VOL? And then, if we talk about a fire fee, that's where we put our conditions. And if we're going to do a fire fee, we're going to do it the way we think best for the city of Dellafield, which is going to be like we talked about. And that's where we put a stake in the sand with the other communities.
When you say conditions, you're talking about, I mean, the only condition where we're talking about is the fund balance.
The rooftop. The equalized rooftop fee.
All right, what condition to that?
Where we're paying the 500, not the 900. That doesn't...
I don't think we have a say in that.
Does that impact our decision on the VOL?
I think it's hard to speculate.
I know what leverage we'd like to use, but...
I think we're going down a path that is hard, that...
We have to make decisions based on the facts we have.
Yeah.
You know, we can't assume, we can't assume anything for the other communities or for a referendum. We can, we can make a decision on VOL.
Chief Funding is asking the comment.
Yeah, thanks for letting me chime in from the sky here. I think you're right on, I know you need to make a decision on next year, and then we keep talking about going back and forth between the VOL plan and the fire fee and so forth. The fire fee has always been 2024 an outline. I think it's got a lot of traction to it right now. Tom, I think the meeting last week is very positive on it. But really, you know, in regards to next year, the only real solution you have before you is the VOL plan. I will say, six of the other communities have voted in favor of that plan, with the city of Dellafield being the last one tonight. And like Matt said, time's on the clock here. Really, this is about keeping fire stations open, responders responding to your system. We can talk about fund balance, make sure that all that's hammered out. And I think I, you know, met with Alden Price last week, Monday. If you're really, if the concern is, is to protect that $200,000 that the city has in those motions made in 2020, and that plan and that memo that I sent out to everyone yesterday outlines that exactly. It almost protects almost all $200,000. You want to put a little more cushion on it, you could say, don't hire the people until February 1st, because then you, for sure, have saved that $200,000. But this is about keeping responders responding to your system. And it's going to be a work.
If the VOL plan makes sense, or if it doesn't make sense, I don't see how the long-term, the design of the long-term fire fee changes that decision, right? It's a decision by, it's no, it's a separate decision. There's some urgency, and unfortunately, this seems to be the only way to have an impact in 2023.
I think the issue that most people are concerned about is if the VOL plan gets passed, okay, and then we don't get that adjustment from, you know, 900 to 500, the chance of the referendum passing becomes very, very small. And then we just spend all this money this year for nothing, because it's gone for the next three years. Then would we do? But again, if we do pass it, the odds are higher that we will get that plot fee, and then we probably wouldn't have to go to a referendum with cutting that almost in half. So, it's, that's a big leap forward.
It gives us time to negotiate that with the other communities, and it also solves the problem for 2023, for a year.
Yeah, but approving the VOL plan as it is, right, is giving up the 200,000?
No.
No, is it not? Okay, I'm sorry.
No, because you can put a contingency, just like the fire chief said.
Right, but if we don't...
Don't hire anybody till, you know, February 1st.
No, I'm sorry, without putting...
Just another way to skin that cat. I mean, we've had three different ideas of how we protect the 200,000. That's a third.
What does the very first date do?
Yeah, what does that do?
Chief, what does the February 1st date do?
Well, every month that the hiring plan goes down the road, it's 76,000 dollars. So, you save an initial 76 right out of the gate. If you do February 1st, and talking to Chief Harter, who's in the room with you tonight, thanks, Chief, for being there, you know, we don't think we can get those positions built, all of them by February 1st. You know, I think that it's going to be an uphill battle to get those positions built, so you have that protected there. And then I also laid out the plan of, you know, hiring step one versus step seven in the pay plan. I mean, that's 150,000 right there, so, just out, you know, doing the math, quick math, you're at 210,000 by February until February 1st.
That doesn't address where those funds are being applied.
We'd have to approve the February 1st delay, and that savings allocated back to the fund balance.
That's a contingency about paying the fund balance back.
Yeah.
It's the same thing. And we're saying, yeah, we need more firefighters, but let's wait a couple months. I don't, I don't get it. It is a very unique situation. I've never, I mean, I can't imagine that governments...
It sounds like Matt said, wait till February 1st, because they can't fill the positions that quickly.
They won't be able to. Especially January 1st.
But are those funds going to stay allocated to Dellafield? If they don't spend those funds by, I mean, that would be us saying that we're just not going to give those funds.
We're saying, yeah, it just stays in the fund. Right.
It's, this is, we're, this is all just a leap of faith. I mean, we're putting $200,000 on a table, walking out of a room, and hoping that it's there in a year. It's way different than anything I've been asked to do in the council for...
That's the city of Dellafield taxpayers' money.
But there's upside to the fact that, you know, I don't see an upside, I don't, there's a downside, that there's 200 grand that's floating around out there. But putting contingencies on the VOL plan, I don't see what it gets us, other than having our other six...
Remember, any of the savings that we're talking about from hiring on February 1st or hiring people at step one or lower, I mean, it's just going to be a start in replenishing the lost capital funds or replenishing the lost fund balance.
Right, no, no, I know, I know.
But those funds would automatically, if they're not spent, they go back in the fund balance, correct?
Correct.
And then, once it's in the fund balance, we own, we own our percentage of that fund balance. So, we don't have it all back, but at least...
But they wouldn't remain, it wouldn't remain allocated towards, it would be essentially redistributing it to the seven.
Based on the, on the formula, and most of the formula gives a chunk of it back to us, because it was our money, right?
But...
Am I wrong with that?
No, 41%.
Right.
No.
But I feel much more comfortable, too, if they can, in the course of the next year, save that 200,000, at least they've got something to fall back on. Right now, if you spend it all, they're going into the year with nothing, if something happens. So, at least they're going to have some cash in the bank, and we would have a percentage of that cash based on that 41%.
That will never be returned?
Probably not, but we weren't expecting it. We weren't expecting it to be returned.
That's a good point, too, yeah. Were we expecting that, that 250,000 or 200,000?
If we weren't expecting it, why was it ever assigned to us?
That's what their auditor said. I'm fine with using it as a credit down the road. I'm just I'm very reluctant to just throw it in the kitty.
I I have a hard time with when there are things we're hoping that will change in our favor coming up. I have a hard time just throwing it in there on faith that that's going to change. Because what incentive is there to change it in our favor? I mean, we're talking about these other communities are are all on board already. Well, yeah, they're they're their contribution to it is is negligible compared to what we what ours is. So, I I feel like there needs to be some contingencies on this pending a universal fee. Now, if if we end up going to that, I'm totally fine with saying then we're willing to rescind this.
Maybe your contingency includes that if a universal fee is established, that the city will drop its claim to fund balance.
I'm fine with that. I would be okay with that, that we would be willing to.
I'll make a motion.
To, or I mean, have it all be allocated to the group to it.
I'll make a motion to approve the VOL plan. With the contingency of, hold on, let me write this down. I'm gonna retract that motion. Strike that, please. So, we would have a contingency of of returning the 200,000 to the City of Delafield, but would void that contingency if a universal fee were passed?
Not necessarily even returning it to the City of Delafield, but at least reestablishing it and it being in the fund balance in the name of the city as opposed to reestablishing it as everybody's equal share of it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, somehow allowing us giving us credit once it starts to be replenished, that we already have credit for what we've already contributed.
Yeah, we need it returned to the fund.
Right, yeah, that we've already.
I just need to think about it a little bit. I don't wanna and I know no one here is playing. I I just want to make sure that we're not playing politics, delaying unnecessarily. I don't think we are. I think it's been a very thoughtful debate, very conscientious of the threats to Lake Country Fire and Rescue, the citizens' needs. But I don't want the perception that we're playing politics of it. But it is the city's money. As you said, it's taxpayer money that taxpayers contributed.
Now, there's still another 200,000 from other cities who have contributed, too, correct?
What's up?
You know, that fund balance isn't all ours. Half of it's our, right?
No, so the amount we're talking about is 250,000, about 200,000 of which belongs to the City of Delafield.
Okay.
The other 50,000 belongs to Neshoda and Shneikwa.
Then the other 100,000 is just cash that they have not spent?
What 100,000 is that?
Isn't there a total of 400 and some thousand on there for a fund balance?
Correct, yeah. That's what they're that's what they're proposing to use, a little over 400,000. And that leaves them with some minimal remaining balance after that.
You could also argue that some of that remaining 400,000 is some of the surplus that the city didn't get back.
We're not going there.
Oh, I just say it. I just Paul asked the question. Just trying to clarify, Maru.
But I yes, but it's not worth the discussion.
No, it's not. I'm not trying to rehash that debate. So, if we would, again, if we pass any approval with contingencies, it requires that it go back to the board and every other municipality to to get along, to approve it as well.
If I'm understanding, sorry to talk to you, Sky, it needs to be done by December 1st, otherwise we revert back to last year.
That's according to the IMA, Chief?
Yep.
My and my argument on that was I I agree in a, I shouldn't say I agree, I appreciate that distinction. But but I did, you know, just like I said at the meeting, we have been very loose with the IMA for better or for worse this year. Not only, you know, the IMA says we are required to pass a CPI plus 2% budget, and we did that, but we also passed two other budgets. So, I I I don't disagree with you, but but I would think with the the critical nature of the staffing, the critical nature of the funding, that we could make adjustments to that IMA to get something passed.
Tom, I need you to agree with what was just out there.
According to the IMA, that is correct, what Matt said.
Matt Fennig or?
Matt Fennig, Chief Fennig.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if that's the standard we're being held to, then it would require all six other communities to come to the table within the next nine days, 10 days?
That's probably not gonna happen. I wouldn't think that fast.
I mean, if everyone if everyone approved the Conemawak Lake Plan, including us, but our approval just says that there needs to be a written agreement before you can hire anybody, is that substantially different that requires the other municipalities to approve that?
Based on what I've witnessed at that board, I would say not.
Chief Fennig, thoughts?
Unmute.
Sorry, I didn't unmute. Tom, could you just repeat that? I just want to make sure I follow what you're saying.
Yes. So, what I questioned is, the other six municipalities have approved the VOL plan with no contingencies. If the City of Delafield passes it but says no, no hiring can can occur until a written agreement is in place, is that substantially different than what the other communities have approved? And would it would it really have to go back to the other communities?
That's in the eye of the beholder, right? I don't I don't know if I have the crystal ball answer to that. So, open for interpretation on what the agreement that.
Like, the worst case is you'd still have your CPI plus 2%. You're off. Everyone's approved that, right? So, it wouldn't revert to last year, right?
Correct. I mean, is the goal, is the direction, that I need to find a way to protect 200, whatever the portion you believe your portion of that fund balance is? Not that it comes back to the city, but it stays in the fund balance earmarked to the city. Is that the directive?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Matt, the agreement could be something as simple as, in the future, when LCFR's fund balance gets replenished, the first 250,000 belong to the original three communities. And if Shneikwa and Neshoda want to give up their claim to that, they can do that. And that that doesn't seem at all unreasonable.
No, I don't. I don't think it does either. I'm just trying to figure out how I do it coming in nine days for the holiday, so.
I'm even I'm even wondering from a legal perspective, and I don't know the answer, and from a financial perspective, if LCFR's fund balance gets drawn down to zero, I don't think that that makes the IOU go away to Delafield, Neshoda, and Shneikwa.
No, it wouldn't. That's a good point.
I don't disagree with you, Tom. But remember, the IOU requires board approval to get out.
Yeah, and again, I don't think it's our goal to get the money out.
Right.
It.
No.
No, it's not.
It's not.
Well, that's a, did we, do we just say, let's just approve the VOL plan and move forward?
If only I was a CPA and I knew for sure what I'm saying is true.
They're not they're not drawing.
Given the, go ahead, Tim.
They're not drawing the fund balance down to zero. There's 10 or 15, five or 15 or something that's staying in there.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah. Or as I say, what, we know that account's dead. We have a new account.
10 grand is.
That's pretty much zero.
But again, that 15,000, if what Matt says in his his letter is correct, a year from now, it's gonna be 120,000, right? And then a year from there, it might be 200,000.
That would be the goal, for sure.
There's there's a ton of advantages for the communities, as well as Lake Country Fire and Rescue, to have a a universal fee put in place. It allows for incremental budget changes in the future to be evenly distributed according to a known entity. It would be more more predictable. Moving forward, and I I like I like the idea that our we're we if we pass the VOL plan tonight, that we would be doing it based on our based on our understanding that that IOU doesn't go away and not necessarily that not not as a contingency, but just stating that that's our understanding, because I don't know how else you'd interpret it. But either either we pass it without a contingency, whether we do or not, we're operating on a negotiation of a universal fee in good faith moving forward anyways, right? I mean, if we want to apply something else to target a community saying you should pay more, we could say, okay, how many retail stores do you have? You should pay more because of that. I mean, any negotiation on how that fee should be established is gonna be in good faith with all seven communities. And so, I don't see how, and that's a bigger hurdle to pass and a bigger challenge than we're dealing with right now. I don't see how having a contingency on the VOL plan today to protect the 200 grand is
That's gonna be.
is is going to advance our goal at all in moving toward a negotiation on a universal fee between all the other communities.
I would agree with that. And I would say, even if we did see a path forward, that the nine days that we have, if December 1st is a hard and fast date, then I don't see any other recourse than to pass a clean resolution.
And if you're looking at it from a negoti like a like end-of-aura agreement on a treaty or something, you're giving up leverage. But we have no leverage. We're one of seven. We're negotiating in a new formula for the future. And I I mean, I don't see how we how it would be healthy for those negotiations to put a contingency on it tonight, other than, again, clearly stating that our understanding is that the that the agreement's clear and the and the past verdicts on where that 200,000 came from is clear to us, and that's part of those negotiations moving forward. Otherwise.
So, if we pass this tonight as a as a clear motion, and then during the negotiation phase, we could elude or whatever that we might be willing to move on that $200,000 number if we get a flat fee, whether it's the whole amount or a part of it or whatever. But now, we we still have a tool to push them towards getting that flat fee.
Those are our best ones right now, but.
Yeah. And the thought on the universal flat fee is that.
Now's the time to put the tool in.
But I don't see.
Not later.
But I don't see it being a healthy advance. I don't see it moving the ball.
You know, the thought on the universal flat fee is that that is the most fair and equitable. And things have fundamentally changed with LCFR staffing and budget, and that warrants a relook at the funding formula. And it makes sense that, you know, if we're gonna go to a fee that a house in Wales pays the same as a house in Genesee pays the same as a house in Delafield.
That makes sense.
And the city can speak to that in the weeks ahead and voice our support for that. I'll make a motion to pass I'll make a motion to pass the Village of Conemawak Lake Plan as previously passed by the Lake Country Fire and Rescue Fire Board with their allocation of both capital and operating budgets to operating.
I'll second that.
All right, is there any discussion?
I'll reiterate again, it's my understanding that nothing changes about the fact that there's a capital investment by the city of $200,000 roughly that is still part of future negotiations that need to occur.
And I would agree with that reiteration and and also indicate the city's passion for a rooftop plan for funding universal fee.
All right, any other discussion?
Can we have a second?
Paul.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes?
Is that the easy one?
Anybody feel we have to get a break, or you guys are all good? Sure. Hey, Mike, can you give us a short break here?
Sure. Hey, Mike, can you give us a short break here? Nice.
That's nice.
Okay, everyone, we're back and on the air.
Five single digits.
So we're still on operating budget. Are there any other topics anybody would like to discuss on the operating budget? Ready to move on? We gotta pass the resolution. Where's the motion?
Well, we need to amend the initial motion to include the other amendments that were discussed and passed. And then vote on that.
All right, I I will amend my motion to pass the operating budget to include the motions that we just passed, which are for public works compensation and the Lake Country Fire and Rescue Village of Oconomowoc Lake Plan.
And workers' comp.
And the workman's comp.
Increase. An $86 increase to the levy.
Okay, and $86 increase to the levy.
And it'd be good to state for a total, for a levy totaling $7,7106.
And seven million, seven, what? For a levy including that amount.
Is that the $86?
I'll second. Do you need a second?
Is that right, Amy? Has he got the right number? Probably off my old penny.
Tried to keep it under seven, but couldn't. That was a yes?
Yes.
So I actually need Grimmer on the second here, because it's amending the initial motion.
The original app.
Oh, yes. I'll agree to the amendment. Your second.
All right.
My second.
Okay. Molly, we all square with that?
I'm gonna have to refer to the recording and video. I missed some of that, but I got it.
You got it.
It'll.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the City of Delafield five-year capital improvements program in the 2023 budget.
I'll second for discussion purposes and further amendments to said budget.
Okay, well, I'll jump in if anybody else isn't gonna jump in. And no surprise, I'm going to move that we remove the St. John's public boat dock for access to downtown. And we've had a lot of discussion about this, a lot of opposition. And not just opinions, but a lot of facts. So I think something that is potentially has a ton of adverse impacts to the quality of life for all the taxpaying citizens who live along the bay. And the bay's health itself and the lake itself, we need to think long and hard before we keep putting money without permits and without proper planning.
Second.
All right, is there?
Jackie, can you summarize your actual motion? There was kind of, it was a motion with discussion, and I just wanna know exactly what you want the motion to be.
To remove the pier from the budget.
Okay.
How's that?
That is perfect. And that's what I had. I just wanted to make.
Probably a little simpler, right?
All right. Any discussion?
Well, I'll just comment that, well, and ask the question. It's my understanding that this is in the budget as an amendment to the, to the, because of the cost increase that we noted from last year's budget, which was already approved.
Correct.
And that this is, this is already contingent upon matching funds from Department of Natural Resources.
Correct.
And so anything, so if Department of Natural Resources does not approve the pier in the project, we do not pay for it. We will not, it will not go forward, based on the current.
That was the contingent on last year's motion that passed.
Okay. And that, that carries over.
Yeah. We've had, since, I'm pulling up the date. Bear with me. It is July 21st of 2021. We have known we needed a permit. And we have, I think we keep putting the money ahead of the permitting. And we keep kicking the can down the road. What concerns me is that the argument will be made, as was just made. Well, the council already approved it. So I can hear the argument that if this carries forward, then we're gonna keep pushing something that I think is problematic at best. With the reverse logic that, well, we already have the money for it, so let's just do it. And that might pressure folks to go along with it. But we haven't gotten the permit. We haven't answered the questions. And I check with the DNR on a regular basis. And I think waiting for this money to come forward is what the city has been doing. And I think it's a very poor plan indeed. And it bothers me that we keep coming back to it. Folks in the community are honestly, frankly, disheartened and discouraged. They have told me without fail that they feel we will just do whatever we want, and we're not listening to them.
On the flip side of that, again, in our, in my district, I have people asking me repeatedly, when is this going forward? They're very excited about it.
I'm sure they are, but they don't live on the bay.
Please, will you let me speak, please? I gave you your time. It's my time now. I'm saying that, yes, there are people who live on the bay who don't want it to go forward. There are also many, over 200 people who signed a petition that they wanted to see this and would be using it. So it's, it goes both ways. There are a lot of people within the community who would like to see this go forward, and we voted to approve it last year on the contingencies that it does get approved by the DNR and that it, it moves forward.
And what have we been doing for an entire year about the permit?
That's, it's being worked on. So we'll, if it goes forward, then it will, then it will go forward. If it doesn't, then it will not.
So at what price are we willing to build that pier? At what price? I'm not talking money. I'm talking at what price to the bay.
I, I have heard your arguments about it.
Not mine.
Disagree with what you've said.
It's not mine. It's what the Department of Natural Resources experts have said.
Then they will turn it down.
It's not the only spawning grounds on the lake.
It is.
If they turn it down, it will get turned down.
Five slips. There are over 1,000 slips on the lake. We're gonna add five more.
No, it's not where the slips are, it's just that. It's going through. It's grinding up with all the boat motors.
There's boats on the lake today. And spawning circles in front of my, I watch them every spring.
And do you think that the lake hasn't changed in the last 50 years? It has changed dramatically.
Of course it has.
Especially that bay.
And the fish are still spawning.
It's, they're not going to be, is.
The boats are here, the slips are here.
We're gonna.
There's a lot of enthusiasm among my constituents as well. I see the benefit to off-lake people. Today, you're off-lake, you put on, you put your boat in the water, you're, you're kinda stranded on that boat all day. If you wanna go refill your picnic basket, or find a restaurant, or find a bathroom, or little Mikey's getting seasick and you need to put in somewhere, there's nowhere. This makes the, the lake a more welcoming place to off, off-lake people. And if the DNR says no, or the state says no to the grant, then it doesn't move forward.
The DNR will not.
Approves it, then they agree it's good. If the state gives us a grant for recreational boating facilities, then they feel it's a good thing.
The DNR will not even entertain the grant without the permit. So we, why don't we do this? Why don't we get the permit and then talk about the pier?
Well, I don't, I don't see much difference in this versus, versus other grant opportunities where we've had, you, you are not eligible to get the grant unless you've got money approved for the matching funds. That's, that's the step we're doing here. And so if the matching funds are, are there, then it's reasonable to invest the time to get the permit, right?
The matching funds can't be applied for without a permit. So you can't get the money first and then get the permit. Because, Tom, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that without the permit, you can't submit the application for the grant. You've done all the paperwork, but the DNR will not accept that application without the permit.
You're real close. You, you can submit the application for funding, and we have, but they will not act on it until we have the permit.
So they will not consider it unless we have the permit.
And just to clear there on some things, our permit was submitted in July of this year. You know, Jackie, you mentioned July of 2021.
That's when they asked you to, to submit one. So you waited a year.
Well, well, we waited until the budget approval was before we considered applying for a permit, because there was no use in us working on something that was controversial, that was unknown at the time, whether it would have supported the council. I thought it would be inappropriate for staff to apply for a permit on a project that the council has not indicated whether they support or not. And beyond that, it has been a difficult year. I'm beyond frustrated that I haven't been able to be more responsive to our permitting needs. We did get the application in in July, and I am, again, beyond frustrated that I haven't been able to find the time to respond to the remaining information, but I do intend to soon. But it's been a matter of prioritization. And, you know, knowing this is not gonna be a project until next year, it has fallen a little bit with regards to prioritization of mine.
Tom, let me ask you. Jeff? Are you on? You turn on your mic.
Please.
We would pass this tonight, but the DNR then turns it down. Where does the money from last year and this year go?
Well, first of all, the money that you'd be approving for this year, we likely wouldn't be borrowing that until about May. And by that time, we'll certainly have clarity with regards to the permitting and the funding. So if you were to approve it tonight, and we don't get the permit, or we don't get the funding, we'd know that by May. And we, as staff, would say, hey, council, you had this money in here for this dock. We didn't get the permit. Therefore, we're recommending that we reduce the amount that you approved by borrowing, for borrowing by that amount. And then we'd also still have the amount that we borrowed this year, based on last year's approval. And that could be redirected towards any project. And again, we could reduce the May borrowing by that amount as well. All right.
I'm, I'll just make a comment. I don't find, I see pros and cons to this. I voted against it last year out of objections from the constituents on both sides of the bay. I see the small economic impact that it provides. I see the nice quality of life that it provides for people on the lake. I wanna support that, but at the same time, I just, environmentally, I, I know there are lots of spawning grounds, but I think it's underappreciated, the location of those docks, how frequently and how many boats are gonna be going through there to see if there's an open spot. And even though there's five or six slips, I can see five to 10 times that people going in there seeing on a busy Saturday or Sunday, seeing if they're opening. And I don't think that's, I think that's kind of a self-inflicted wound for lake residents that I think that they should avoid. But I, again, I don't, I'm not overly passionate on this project, either way.
One thing that was mentioned with a discussion with someone who was on Parks and Rec is that there's a very thriving business that rents paddleboards and kayaks that take off right from that end of the bay. And that's an already established seasonal business, but definitely something that people use. I kayak frequently, and I also, we also have a boat that we put in the lake. And some of the problems we're discussing, I would call first-world problems, but going back to the paddleboard, people who are learning to paddleboard, the bay is a safe place to go. And we're definitely going to take that away. It won't be a quiet zone at all. We haven't talked about the maintenance of the pier, the lighting, the noise, the safety. There's just a lot of concerns. The idea is great. The price, I don't think the ride's worth the bear, but you already know that.
It is a no-wake zone. The whole thing is a no-wake zone. It's still quiet.
I'll also, I'll refresh the fact that the, what has become known as the fishing pier, the initial intent of that was to have it be a mooring pier. There's just a rule about dams, earthen dams with DNR that was not made clear or known. So there's, this is not a new request for a pier in that area.
No, and they actually said if we were asking for another fishing pier, they would support that. It's the boats that they object to. That was in one of the letters I submitted to you.
All righty, any other discussion?
I'd like, like to make a comment. I've been kinda wrestling with this one for quite some time. We've been in this council, a number of things have come up during the last three months, and people have come up here and talked, and talked, and talked. And we, we seem to pretty much gone along with, with, with the flow. We did on the St. John's project over here, making, making some changes, because obviously the, the community was not in favor of it. Obviously, the St. John's community on both sides of the bay are obviously against it. And I've had probably 15 phone calls and another 15 or 20 emails saying they just don't want this at all. So I just, that's a tough one. I think the, the concern to have a downtown pier, I think would, would be great. But if it affects that many people, I'm just kinda on the edge on that one.
All right, so the motion is to remove the 14,000 and some change from this year's capital budget. So the motion's to remove. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions?
Can I get the nays to please raise their hands?
Motion carries. Next.
I would like to make a motion to remove $80,000 for two pickleball courts in Oakwood Park.
Second.
And I, I, again, I suggest that there be a plan that demonstrates how it's going to be utilized long-term. And what are the amenities? If it's a succession of amenities that are gonna be added to the park, or or just have something, some feedback from Park and Rec that, that shows this as something other than dropping a pickleball court there for next year.
You mentioned this in a previous meeting, that it would almost, and I'm not suggesting that you amend your motion in any way, but it would almost make more sense if there were four pickleball courts there.
I.
were four pickleball courts there. Demonstrate that, you know, here's a significant investment in, I intend on supporting your motion, by the way, but here's a, a significant investment and a plan, and, and that, that kind of almost makes more sense to me as well, in the out years, but not this year.
I love, yeah, I'm not a pickleball player, but I know a lot of them, and they're very enthusiastic about it. And I just think financially, we're so, it's not a good time.
There is a long-term plan for that park, right? There's, includes pickleball courts, tennis courts. There's currently a nine-hole Prisby Disc Golf Course there. So there is a greater plan for it. I don't think that we need to come up with a plan to develop and pave the whole thing. I think some open green space is part of the definition of a park. So I don't feel like the whole thing has to be, you know, has to be dug up at once.
Mark, is that the Park and Rec five-year plan you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a plan for more pickleball courts at that area? I don't see it on the budget.
In that park?
In that, in Oakwood Park, yeah.
No, no. It's a good location. It's got some isolation from surrounding homes.
Yeah, no, I agree it's a good location. And, and I just think it's, yeah, it's, like Jackie mentioned, it's, it's, the timing is not that great.
I love them, yeah.
Understood.
I really want them.
The other, the timing issue is, Plan Commission, there could be some significant land use changes to the adjacent properties, which might affect what we want to do there.
I think with, with the popularity of pickleball, you might be able to find some way to maybe fund four courts in the future and have it paid by a user fee. It might actually make, make a few bucks, because it's extremely popular, right? I don't think you, compared to what a, a private club might charge somebody, you know, you charge, you know, five bucks an hour, it would raise quite a bit of money. And you probably end up having to have some staff there to supervise and get people off and on the court on time and stuff, so it would be a pretty sizable thing, but you might be able to fund it in such a way that it would at least get close to breaking even. But that's not for us to discuss tonight.
I think the, the Park and Rec vision for it would be, would be open, like our basketball courts or our tennis court. In the meantime, there are options in El Conomoc and Heartland for our residents. They're both indoor and outdoor, pickleball courts in both those towns. But there's nothing here.
That's true. My neighbors remind me of that.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion on this topic? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Can you raise your hand if you're a nay?
Extentions? Motion to remove passes.
I'll make a motion to remove public dredging in the amount of $240,000.
I'll second.
So I guess I have a lot of questions on this. I do appreciate the, oh, I appreciate the Sylvester residents and, and their concerns about that area. I supported and voted in favor, not only of the initial allocation for the 2022 capital budget in the amount of 240, but then the additional on top of that, which was to dredge another six to 10 to 12 inches further. I, I just feel that this amount increase from, what was it last year, 289 plus an additional 240, we're getting to a point where that is, I, I just feel that that is, I'm concerned the city's being bamboozled with the, the, the cost increase, or the original cost estimate for this project was so out of line that in 2021, when we approved 2022, that there was no way that it was ever going to be, we were going to win a bid. So I guess my question is, how did we come up with the 289 figure originally?
It was 265.
Thank you.
Yep. And it was developed by the Lake Welfare Committee, and that, there's a large document in your budget book that details it.
I'll speak a little bit to that, because I've had some experience with, like, my mom headed up the dredging project in her bay, and a lot of those numbers were very consistent with what the costs were just a few years ago. So it was not unreasonable to think that that was a doable number. To be fair, I mean, costs have gone up. It just, the, the, it's just a different thing. And unfortunately, the safety issues around that area are only getting worse, and the costs are not going to go back down. It's only going to get more and more expensive, and as it gets, if we allow it to continue to get worse, it's going to get, I mean, it is already at a critical point, where if we don't do it now, there's going to be some sort of, some sort of a disaster there.
And I appreciate this, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, I'm like, I, I agree, like, it's really a tough pill to swallow right now, and we tried to get the 500,000 approved years ago, and that didn't go through. So at, just at this point, to not approve it now would be buying your time until something serious happens, and I, I just.
And I appreciate, and I agree with the safety concerns in that area. I agree with the inflationary impact. I just think that the adding $240,000 is almost writing a blank check for this project. That's how I perceive it. I'm sure that's how my constituents might perceive it, perceive it. I just think it's, it's that, that amount is so significant, and such an increase from the original, almost double, that how could you perceive it any other way? Then it's essentially writing a blank check, that contractors say that it costs half a million, so it costs half a million.
Well, they had multiple, I mean, there were multiple bids. There were multiple, this was very laid out, this, in this, I mean, last year, when they, when we submitted the, the proposal, it was just estimates based on what had been in the past. This one, we have, we have bids, so, I mean, they, they're going to have to do them, I mean, I believe they're going to have to do them again now, if I'm mistaken, because we had to turn them down. However, it's more reasonable that that's going to be at least close to what it is this coming up. If we put it off longer, it's going to continue to go up.
Sure, and I'll have good faith in the original Lake Welfare estimate from last year. I think that inflation is transitory and is coming down, God willing, and I think, I think we can get a better deal.
Part of the problem at the time, though, when they, when we set that first budget up, that we could gain free access, like we did in the project eight years earlier, by the lot that was on that corner. They changed their mind, so now they had to go to the next lot over and build a road in marshland. That was $70,000. That's a good, that's a third of that whole increase was putting in that road. If that neighbor would decide to change their mind and let us go through there, doesn't appear that they are, but that's how we kind of got held up there.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a lot of mind. It's unfortunate that that neighbor won't save the city $70,000.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of efforts, and they have not worked out.
I have supported dredging, and, and I, and I still do. I am wondering, I have two questions. Obviously, we want to get the best, you know, deal we can, and I, I believe that it's really important. I also wonder about the source of all the, the silt and the runoff that is clocking that area. Is it something upstream that we need to be talking to our upstream neighbors? That's not solving it right now, but it's just something like if we budget for dredging, how long does it last? And is it just going to fill in, you know, in five years, and we'll be faced with even more expense? So how can we mitigate the silt buildup?
We've talked about a silt fence forever, but that's not feasible, is it?
No.
Oh, we're going to put a ditch, you know, get it, make it 10, 12 feet deep and let it drop off there. But the, the whole problem with that, when it, when it first came through back into 2008, we had this huge flood, and it just cleared out the whole Bark River, and it just dumped there. And it sits there. The problem is now, everything's hitting that, and it's making it bigger and bigger and bigger. And two or three years from now, the Bark River's going to be closed. I think just the flooding potential would be astronomical. If the water of the Bark River stops flowing, it goes up both sides. It fills up, there's no, I mean, the water is almost stopping out of the Bark River, and it's just shoving it right down the both, both shorelines, into a very, very narrow corridor. And when that thing totally goes across, we got a real, real problem. And the next big storm we have, it's going to come flowing right over the top of that. And see, once it's gone, the water will naturally flow out again, and then we don't have that big drop-off. It goes out in the middle of the lake and sinks. Hopefully, we won't have another horrendous storm like that.
Yeah, and I, and again, I don't doubt the need. I don't, maybe I doubt the urgency of it, but I don't doubt the need. I just think the price tag is, is too much, based on the 265 that we had last year. Now we're almost essentially doubling that.
I was part of a dredging project on Souths Astro 10 years ago. Much smaller project. I'm not, I'm not surprised at this, at this price. It does not seem out of line. And the other thing, this lake is our most valuable of our natural resource, right? If we get a reputation for being a, you know, poor lake or non-navigable lake, it'll take decades to fix that reputation, after you fix the problem. We can't let this get worse. It is, it's bad. And, yeah, it's a navigation issue, and it's a usability issue, and it makes this lake less desirable for on-lake and off-lake visitors. It's important. This is going to get worse, and it's going to get more expensive.
Agreed.
To fix the problem, let alone the reputation.
Good point. I think, to your point of where you think that the pricing is, inflation's going to go back down, I don't think it's going to go back down in a reasonable time to address the issue that we have here. I think that maybe by the next time we would need to address it, hopefully it would be back down, but, I mean, this, this is something that needs to be taken care of now. I mean, this isn't something that can wait five years. I mean, we're at that point where it is critical now.
I'll say, my opinion on this is a little bit like pickle, the pickleball courts, in a way that there's a certain amount of infrastructure that you're putting in place to get this dredging project started. And it doesn't, doesn't really change what I feel about the expenditure and where I think the, the money should come from, but, you know, I bet if you, I, I think the numbers are, they're, they're real. I mean, the, the bids prove that out. I'm familiar, my, my brother lives in Northlake, I know what they're paying for dredging there, and they have a pipeline that they put in place, and they're pumping it right under the highway into a quarry. And they're, so they don't have the transportation cost, and they're spending a couple million I would like to see, and I know it's, it's a moving target, but if, if it happens to go through, that there's some vehicle where, I don't, I don't know if it's possible for people to, to piggyback onto this project that are in the neighbors that are on Sylvester, but to some make, to make some personal contributions to increase the amount of silt that gets out of there once all the infrastructure's in place, so.
I wouldn't be surprised.
So if there's, so if there's an alternate, was that a part of the bid package?
No.
It's not, no.
I think it really needs to be if this were to pass.
Well, that gets dicey. The concept can be done, and they can do that on the side, but to run it through the city processes is challenging.
Okay, I'm just suggesting that I think someone.
At least remind you.
But I believe that's the motive, I mean.
I remember, I remember hearing this before, but I, but I think that the whole concept needs to be fully vetted, as far as how to enable the neighbors of this to contribute, because, you know, I, one of the first committees I was on with Ed McIlhery, as he put me on the Lake Treading Committee, to look at a different alternate for the, the idea of a sediment basin up there, and never forget the words, I think it was from Fathan Associates, one of their engineers, said, you know, in nutshell, he said, you, you know, because we kept saying, how long is it going to last? How long is it going to last? He says, well, you dammed up the, you dammed up the lake, you created a big silt basin, silt trap. I mean, Nagawicke Lake is a silt trap, and the nature won't be happy until it gets its old shorelines back, you know, and that's Astro Bay, and so this is, it was a man-made dam, it's a man-made effort to maintain it, and if we don't, it's going to go back, so there's a cost associated with that. And, you know, who should, who should pay for it and how is the big question that's older than most, I don't think, probably predates everyone here as far as their public service, as far as how to deal with it, but anyway, that's, I think the numbers are real. I think the numbers are real.
I just wanted to comment on neighbor participation. I just remind the council that whatever the date is, if it's 10 years, or eight years, or 12 years, I don't remember, but the neighbors did put in, I believe the number was $365,000 into this project, and the city would not do their part by doing the center, and because they couldn't be done at the same time, it made us where we are today.
It did, and I, I was on the county council when that vote was taken. I remember it very well, and, and it was the perfect time for the city to step up, because so many citizens put so much skin in that game. I was disappointed at that vote.
It's more than, they put in more than what you're being asked for tonight.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought it was more like $600,000.
I think it was like, I think it was in the fours, yeah. I mean, it was, I think it was more than what.
I'm remembering 365 for some reason, but don't quote me.
I think it was in the fours. It was, it was a significant amount. And they did that with the understanding that the city was also going to be doing it, and then they didn't. So, I mean, to say that that should be part of it, it already was, they already did their part of it, and now we're doing it eight years later, however many years later, like.
Probably have to do it again.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, there are things that need to be addressed, yeah, but that's, a lot of the things, the upriver issues are not within our control. So yes, we would love to take care of those things, but until we have control over those things, it's kind of, we can only do what we can do.
All right. Any more discussion? So we'll remind you, this is a vote to remove this item from the capital budget. So all in favor to remove this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Can I get hands on the nays again?
Motion fails. Hope you had a list written down before you got here.
So just, just for clarity, the city of Delphields, the city of Delphields contribution to Lake Country Fire and Rescue 2023 Capital Budget for $191,000, that is part of the, sort of part of the plan we already voted on, right? In a way?
It is.
Yeah, okay, all right. We're paying for a truck, but we're not really paying for a truck until we pass another plan later.
That'll be paying, used to pay for staffing.
I know, but it was here because we're paying, buying a truck, and now it's here to use for staff. Okay.
You voted for it.
Voted for what? I voted for the truck and the staff.
But we don't have to clean up the capital, our, the former, the previous motion.
I'm just saying that that's attached.
Amendment to the capital, essentially.
That's, that's attached.
Electric vehicle.
Oh, come on, Jackie likes that one.
I don't, I'm just trying to, you know, with a lot of my motions tonight, it's all about keeping perspective and timing, especially with what we're faced with.
A question on.
Well, I'll just remind you that, you know, it takes a million dollars roughly in the capital budget to equate to an expense in the operating budget for the typical city employee. So when we talk about other challenges that we have, we're talking about huge dollar amounts within the capital budget. Many items in our capital budget, in the end, when they translate to a payment out of the operating budget are significantly different.
And I appreciate that difference and I know everyone on the council appreciates that difference. But there is a, the public doesn't always appreciate that difference. And when
But it's the truth.
Yes. No, it absolutely is. But the public doesn't always appreciate that difference. And there is a dollar amount attached to pulling that public along with you and, and presenting a city budget that, that is in line with our values and what else that we're asking for. If that makes sense. Or what else we're going to be asking for.
Well, I had one item from our, our workshop group. The addition of the speed signs in the various districts. And I asked each person, alderperson to think about their district and come tonight with whether they thought they would need one in their district. And we told them up and make an addition to the capital budget for the ones that the council members felt that they needed. So who, who thinks they need an additional flashing stop sign?
I need one.
Two?
Do we know locations?
I do.
Oakwood.
Oakwood and?
Oakwood and the one, Fieldstone, Oakwood and anywhere on Oakwood.
Yeah.
Paul, did you need one anywhere?
You were talking about putting one on Jurney's for whether they're 100% serious in that, because we do have a, have an issue. But it's, it's not a steady street, so I'm not sure we're even eligible.
Jackie, do you have one? Not Milwaukee Street?
We already have Milwaukee Street. We're good.
Mark, anywhere?
We've got one on Oakwood and one on Nagawicke. I think they're well-placed.
Okay.
One thing we heard from the police department too was that they have a immediate effectiveness and it reduces over time. So maybe rotating
We have some that we rotate.
More rotation will help.
Yeah.
Or they have anyway.
Danielle, you got any? Did you have any?
I don't.
Okay. What did you guys determine was the final number on that?
4,500.
Per unit?
It was in the memo.
For one? Okay. Hold on. It was higher than the ones I picked out.
You got to watch on Walmart. You got to stop at Walmart.
So real quickly, it is 41, 41, 50. But then there was a mention of another $83 for a mechanical spinning warning device.
Okay.
And then there was
I don't think we have to worry about $83 things in the capital budget.
Well, and then, and then there was hardware and installation costs. And it was assumed that Public Works would do the install, but that we would need to get a pole and hardware for each one. And so I had recommended a budget number of 4,500 a unit.
4,500, okay. So if we need two of them, that would be 9,000.
And can I clarify the one that exists in my district and Tim's district? That's not a permanent one. That's one that's being rotated on Oakwood. On Oakwood, and I don't need one. You could subtract mine.
Down to one?
Yeah, because mine's permanent.
Shorter road.
Shorter road, heading west, yeah.
So then I guess we have one. So we're looking for some way to make a motion to include $4,500 in the capital budget.
I'll make a motion to include $4,500 in the capital budget for a speed enforcement.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. And then I had one other item that I brought up at the workshop. The Lions were going to volunteer the labor to repair the shed in Fireman's Park. And I believe that number, Tom, we said we needed $700. Am I remembering that right?
That's what you had said, yeah.
Yeah. $700. So I'd be looking for somebody to add $700 to the capital budget for materials to repair the shed in Fireman's Park.
Awesome move.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. I believe it was Matt.
Matt.
Yes, I did.
An additional, how much?
700.
I have a question. In the Liberty Park, we were showing 500,000 for the benchel. Was that changed at the last meeting? Or not?
It was never changed, but, and that's also not for next year, right? It's in 2024, placeholder.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to revisit one item and just ask for some clarification. With the funding for the boat dock not approved, should staffs continue pursuing the permit and the funding application or should we withdraw those?
Continue, please.
I would continue. I think it was suggested we should do that before funding anyway, so.
Yeah, I think providing a little bit more clarity.
Okay.
Wouldn't hurt.
If we have the approval and the grant, we know the state's behind it, the DNR is behind it, maybe that'll
Okay.
Change the dynamic.
We'd have to come back for the budget then.
For sure.
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to put you guys on the clock. Anything else? Going once. Going twice. Sold. Who's crafting that final motion?
Already had it from Tim.
Yeah.
He, he did it for operating, right?
I did it for this one too.
It was a motion.
Yeah. And so now we need a motion with the summary of the changes, correct?
I should have kept track.
We have to amend the initial motion. So we just need the first two to basically kind of first and second a friendly amendment. Which could be a clear summarization or just a
That's what you get when you make a motion.
Amendment to approve the capital budget as discussed and approved this evening or if you like.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to amend, well, I'd like to amend my initial motion to approve the capital budget, including the motions and amendments that we just passed.
Second.
You good with that?
Yep.
Okey dokey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. All right. We are on to D, correct? Update and possible discussion regarding Lake Country Fire and Rescue budget funding, fire fee development and possible referendum for budget years 2024 through 2026. Now, is this something we have to come to a decision tonight on, Tom, or do we still have more time here?
No, not at all. This was really just intended to be an update and we really ended up discussing much of what I wanted to talk about during the budget discussions, which was namely that Lake Country Fire and Rescue staff is pursuing a universal fee with the seven different municipalities. It would result in a significant reduction as far as the city's exposure to fire fees or fire costs to the tune of, you know, under the current IMA, we'd be looking at city residents and businesses paying around $2.7 million in 2026. And this would reduce our exposure to about $1.9 million in 2026. So a significant reduction, but something that's being viewed as appropriate given the significant changes in budgeting and staffing and funding and more of a fair and equitable approach when looking at responsibility for fire costs amongst the different municipalities. The problem is that I, I don't see a path where we'll have definitive answer on this in the coming weeks or even by mid-January, which is the date that we need to have a answer, a question approved by if we wanted to go to referendum in April. And so with that being said, I'm seeing our more likely path is that if we don't get to a universal fee and we do need to go to referendum, we'd probably be looking at a special election in August or November of next year.
Not November, right? We, do we have a, do we have a regular election?
We don't have one in August. Next year's only planned elections would be February and April, right Molly?
Okay. So we'd have to do a special election.
Special election, probably about a $5,000 additional cost to hold the election. Typically not a good
Little turnout.
Turnout for an election like that.
We don't have a lot of choices.
Yeah, I mean
This timetable is handed to us, right? I mean, it's not like we're picking this timetable.
Yeah. I'll keep updating the council and if something changes, where, where some clarity starts to prevail with regards to which direction we're going. But we don't want to go to referendum, you know, for 2.7 million in 2026 if it might be 1.9 and, and vice versa.
Special elections with a single item for referendum on it are not anybody's favorites. It really has all sorts of bad connotations about it. So I'd really be just say I'm hopeful that the communities and the board get together with something that we can act on to get on April's ballot.
Does anybody on the council think that if we can't agree on a universal fee in the next weeks to month that we go to referendum for the current IMA funding allocation?
That would be a mess.
I heard that discussed, I believe in the, in the fireboard meeting and that knowing that there's an alternative that's being batted around also, also is a nasty thing to deal with when you've got people voting on a referendum that there might be a Plan B coming down the pike. I mean, it's, it's just, the timeline's brutal, so.
And five out of seven communities in Western Lakes rejected their referendum. The town of McGowanago in November, this last November referendum only passed their increase by, I think it was 80 to 90 votes. And so these are not a slam dunk at all. In fact, the majority, at least in, well, the more, obviously the majority that I mentioned failed. I don't know if that's the case statewide, but at least the ones around here are failing. And to Tim's point and the point that we made on the board, if people believe that there is a Plan B, just like they, you know, they believe there's a Plan B, they're not going to support 2.7 when they think they can get 1.9, nor should they.
Do you need any other direction?
I don't.
All right. We'll move on to the next item, which is E. Discussion and possible action regarding receipt of the resignation of Wayne Dean from the elected office of Alderperson of District Four of the city of Delafield effective April 3, 2022, and establishing the common council's course of action to fill the vacancy per state statute 17.23. Tom, you want to kick us off?
I think Molly's going to handle this one. Obviously that agenda item should have read 2023.
So we received the resignation of Alderperson Dean from District Four effective April 3, 2023. The city has gone through this before where we have had a vacant seat out of term and needed to fill. We have basically three options. We can order a special election. The city can, or the council actually could order a special election. The council can appoint an alderperson to the vacant aldermanic seat to fill the remainder of the term. Or you could appoint somebody to that aldermanic seat and then subsequently hold another special election. Or leave the seat vacant until the spring election in 2024 when it is up for official reelection. The special election route, the clerk's office would recommend if you are choosing to go that route that we, that the council make that decision to hold the special election concurrent with the spring election. Or the main reason is the cost savings, as Administrator Haffner just pointed out, to hold a special election in and of itself is at least $5,000. This would be a little bit reduced because the number of residents would only be for the District Four. But the statutes kind of limit if you're, if you don't hold it before or after the election cycle in April, you have to hold it concurrent with or outside of that cycle. Then the other option would be to appoint somebody. Then previously, the council has kind of accepted applications, reviewed them for approximately a month and then determined about a month later. I'm not sure exactly of the timing as far as if you were to go the route of appointment when the council could officially appoint somebody because Alderman Dean has not resigned until April 3, which is the day before the election. So I'm not sure if we were to, if the council were to start that process now and then, you know, pick somebody, perhaps we would have to wait to officially appoint that person. And I'm waiting for kind of a determination, direction from the council before we get the details on how that would go from the attorney. And then, so are there any questions about the processes or the summary here?
What are the costs associated with the two, the two options? Like you said it would save us a little bit to do, but what would be, do you have any idea what the additional cost would be of doing a special election versus an appointment?
So are you talking a standalone special election or special?
No, no, concurrent with the April election.
I think the ballots are approximately, I want to say the last cost I got from the county when I was doing budgeting is like 21 cents per ballot. So if the, that area has, let's just say 500. We'll, we'll do 25 cents maybe. That's easier for me. Calculator.
But they'll have ballots anyway, right Molly?
But that's a standalone.
So 125 bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just for the ballots is really the only additional cost.
Okay.
And there would be other ballots, Administrator Haffner, but not for that district.
Well, sure there would for the Supreme Court election. And then you would just add
Yeah.
You would just add the name on the ballot, wouldn't you, for District Four?
That is true.
Because they're already print, they're going to be printed for District Four for other things.
Yeah, with him resigning
That would be lumped into all of the other aldermanic districts that did not have an alderman, alderperson up for election. So this would be an additional set of ballots that would have to be. So I guess it would kind of balance each other out, probably.
We don't all get the same ballots.
Right.
If you're not in that district, you need special ballots.
But if you don't have an alderman up for, then you all get the same ballot for all of those. So it would be a special.
With, with, I don't know, it just seems obvious to me with Wayne resigning the day before the election and Camet seeing starting to run in April, being December 1, I believe.
Well, that's why I picked that date. I met with the election commissioner.
Well, that's why I picked that date. I met with the Election Commissioner in Madison. I went there when I decided that I'd be transferring and moving my family to Colorado sometime next year. So I met with them, and they said as long as I submitted my resignation with an effective date, then the council can make an action, and then I had to fill out the other form that I am not running again, like we would all have to do, which I submitted also. It's in the packet. So my intent was to do it so that the constituents in District Four would have the opportunity to, if somebody wanted to run, they could file their papers in December.
Yeah, just like the normal process, just out of cycle.
As opposed to waiting till the end of the year and then having you guys appoint somebody for only a couple of months.
Yeah, and with your resignation being April 3, really, if we do the election route, there's no reason to appoint somebody because there's no time to serve.
Right.
That's why I did it.
And I think to quote Matt, who often says that he has faith in the constituents, and I think we should respect that. You know, the folks in District Four should be making that decision.
I agree. My only concern was if there was a significant cost, which there isn't, so I think that's.
Yeah, I think we get the 100 bucks, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to order a special election to fill the impending vacancy by Alderman Dean to be concurrent with the normal election that's being held in April 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thanks, Wayne, for doing all the homework.
Yes.
I was, I initially thought like, how can you, how can we take action when there's not a vacancy yet? Well, you figured it out, so that's, that was a good puzzle. Thanks for doing that work.
Thanks for the good timing.
Molly looked at the data.
Thank you, your thoughtful work.
All righty, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
Before we move forward, I believe I have to read the order into the record.
Okay.
Whereas Wayne Dean won the April 5, 2022 election for the District Four Alderperson seat for a two-year term expiring on April 15, 2024. Whereas Wayne Dean has submitted his resignation from his District Four Alderperson seat, effective April 3, 2023, which will thereby create a vacancy pursuant to state statute, or section seventeen point zero three subsection two of the Wisconsin state statutes. Where it is in the best interest of the city of Delafield that the seat to be vacated on April 3, 2023 of Alderperson for Aldermanic District Four be filled as soon as possible, which can be by a special election of the electors of Aldermanic District Four. And whereas on Monday, November 21, 2022, the common council, by motion made, is seconded and duly adopted, move to hold a special election for the vacant Aldermanic seat in Aldermanic District Four on Tuesday, April 4, 2023, as authorized by section seventeen point two three subsection one, subsection AM of the Wisconsin statutes. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the common council of the city of Delafield that a special election be held to fill the vacant Aldermanic seat in Aldermanic District Four of the city of Delafield on Tuesday, April 4, 2023, and that the timing for circulation and filing of nomination papers in the primary, if necessary, be as follows. A primary election, if necessary, shall be held on Tuesday, February 21, 2023. Nomination papers may be circulated beginning Thursday, December 4, 1, 2022. Nomination papers must be filed no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 3, 2023. Be it further ordered that the term of Alderperson, of the Alderperson elected by the electors of the Aldermanic District Four will be for the remainder of the term vacated by Wayne Dean, which will expire April 15, 2024. That's all.
Awesome. All right. Glad we did that. All right, we'll move on to F. Approval vouchers payable report for reporting dates as noted on the agenda.
So moved. Who had that?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
She for head second.
Yep. Opposed, abstentions, passes. All right, we'll move on to 12A, City Administrator, anything else?
No report this evening.
City Clerk, B.
The November 8, 2022 election report, the city had 4,215 voters. Of those voters, 2,778 voted at the polls, and 1,437 voted absentee, and there are 248 election day registrations.
Molly, what percentage of eligible voters voted?
I.
There's like 5300 or something.
It's 70 something. I emailed it to myself.
It's high. I think Delafield should be proud.
Seventy-nine point five one percent.
I was guessing 80, thank you. Yay, yes.
That's pretty amazing, really.
I bet.
The Badger Books, we think, went well. We had a line out the door at times. I timed somebody from just outside, like just inside of that main, or that first kind of door to the outside, and it was a 12-minute run all the way through from the gentleman waiting, and then to getting his ballot voting and walking out the door. So I think we did a good job. I heard other municipalities had several hours of wait, so I think I'm petting ourselves and all the poll workers and everybody that was there that evening, and all day. Giving them a huge round of applause and a thank you, and we can't do it without them, and I think they did a great job. It's a little bit of a learning curve, but it was, I love them. They're great. So thank you guys for that.
You're the friendly army.
Sure does make the lines go faster, not having to wait in A to C and, you know, all that.
It was, it was very good. I went after school.
You got 10 people in your line and nobody in the other, and you're like, why am I standing here?
And I'm like, wait, there's too many letters in that sequence there.
All righty. Well, thank you very much, Molly. Nice job with that.
All right, the second item for me is just for those of you that have any ins with any of the groups in the city, I have requested communicator articles from the Usual Suspects. If you have anybody who hasn't submitted yet, either as a usual contributor or somebody who is not a usual contributor, we're always looking for articles and information, strictly informational, though, no solicitations, please. Those are due November 30 for the January 2022 communicator. And then the final item for the city of, the city clerk's office is just a reminder that we have office closures November 24, 25, December 23, December 26, December 30, and January 2 coming up.
Sounds good. City Treasurer's report.
Nothing new to report.
No report. And you're here.
Been quiet all night.
We get to see you twice a year, maybe three. Okay, D, Council request for future agenda items, any of those?
I actually have one. I've been waiting because we wanted to get through the budget to discuss with the council a couple of options, maybe, to address the complaints of speeding on Milwaukee Street. I have ideas.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, I'll refer you to number 13, Correspondence, that was in the packet. Seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 10:35. Everyone, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
And you.
You, too.